Good morning, everyone. This is Kathleen George, Chair of the EQC. And with us today, we'll let the record show that we have Vice Chair Barasso and Commissioner Kyle with us. And what about Commissioner Schlescher?
She is not going to be here today.
That's right. That you actually did address that at the end of yesterday's meeting. So understood. Okay. And as we often do when we begin our work here together, we take a moment to reflect and just remember the DEQ's mission is to be a leader in restoring, maintaining, and enhancing the quality of Oregon's air, land, and water. So when we get together and when we provide these opportunities to hear from the public and to do the work with the department, that's what we're trying to accomplish. So thank you for joining us and doing that work today. Our first agenda item today is our public forum. So we are going to begin by listening, which is a good place to begin. Stephanie, you usually have some general guidelines for us for the public forum. Would you mind sharing those now?
Yes, thank you, Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, the Commission Assistant. At this time, I will put on the screen, as well verbally, information about how to ask to present comment. If you are on Zoom, you may use the raise hand function in the participants panel. If you are connected only by telephone, please press star nine, which will have the same effect. Once your hand is raised, we will take a count of that. And from there, Chair George, I will be able to indicate how many people have requested to speak this morning. Usually just takes me a minute to do that quick count.
That sounds just great. We see the hands going up now, so go ahead and take that count. If people weren't able to join us yesterday, we did have some opportunity to hear from the public about some of the specific items related to climate that we had yesterday. But it will be to be seeing what people have on their minds this morning.
And thank you, Chair George. At this time, we do have five people indicating an interest in commenting today. Typically, Chair George, you have allotted three minutes per commenter and would just like to affirm if that works for the Commission today.
I think that's a good way to start. We'll see if we have anybody join us as we go.
And thank you, Chair George. For the speakers today, you will see on screen three slides to prompt you. And please state your name when you begin. Our first commenter this morning is Dale Feek.
Can you hear me, Stephanie?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. And Dale Feek, Chair of the West County Citizen Action Network. Kathryn George, Chair, Vice Chair Sam Barasso, Commissioners Molly Kyle, Greg Allerton, Amy Scholser, some of you are not there, and Director Richard Whitman. Changing the culture of a large organization like the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality is daunting, but with the leadership of Governor Kate Brown and Commission Chair Kathleen George working with the other four environmental quality commissioners, giving direction to and listening to DEQ Director Rich Whitman, it has happened. Under the leadership of former West County Chair Linda Peters, who helped co-found West County Citizen Action Network, after she served eight years as West County Commissioner, she asked me in September of 2017, 2013, to attend an environmental quality commission meeting with her and Tillmack to make public comment before the EQC and then Director DQ Dick Peterson. From that time on, I have been a regular attendee of most environmental qualification meetings in every part of the state of Oregon before COVID-19 and since then during the Zoom EQC meetings. Under Director Rich Whitman's leadership and Chair Kathryn George's chairmanship, DQ has operationalized DEQ's mission. As you said, DQ is a leader in restoring, maintaining, and enhancing the quality of Oregon's air, land, and water. And now the DEQ has been partnered with the Oregon Health Authorities' Mission, which is helping people and communities achieve optimum physical, mental, and social well-being through partnership, prevention, and access to quality, affordable health care. The residents of Oregon can be proud of DEQ that is making a positive difference for Oregon and its residents. Richard Whitman will be sorely missed at DQ after retires in December, but DEQ is much more likely to continue to fulfill its mission because of his leadership. That does not mean that many daunting challenges are resolved, but the will and means to address them are systematically being used. And I said, see attachment in my email to you of Richard Whitman's climate change. This is similar to what Commission Chair Kathryn Harrington is doing in Washington County. Just one quick example of the Air Toxic Science Advisory Committee meeting way back when it was loaded with corporation industry people. Now it has been changed where it is now an expertise in the area of toxicology and epidemiology. That's a major change in the way DEQ operates, and it shows the commitment toward the community and the people in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek.
And thank you. Our next speaker today is James Hugo.
Can you hear me?
We hear you great.
Hello, everyone. My name is James Hugo. I am a community scientist and civil rights advocate. I am the co-director of Environmental Safety Standards Association. I'm very grateful for this opportunity to express my concerns about an environmental health and safety crisis in my hometown of Springfield, Oregon. I am not sure if everyone here has watched The Simpsons movie from years ago. The main climatic event of that movie is when the EPA covers the town of Springfield with a dome because the town has become too toxic. Well, Springfield may need an actual dome. Currently, I live within a half mile of a giant 600-acre craft paper mill owned by International Paper Corporation. Every night at 9:00 PM, when my family would like to get ready for bed, the mill fires up their wastewater and recycling facilities. Our home shakes with vibrations, then the awful rotten egg sewer gas odors come into the neighborhood and into my home. Even with eight medical-grade air filters in my home, my family still suffers. We cannot move because we're low income. I am sure if this meeting was held after 6:00 PM, there would be thousands of low-income individuals wanting to express their concerns about toxic emissions in their neighborhoods. But most of those folks are working right now, so I'll be their voice here today. There are not enough air monitoring stations in Oregon. In my neighborhood, there is not a single publicly accessible air monitoring station. I do not know what is in the air I am breathing. Oregon has only one N Core site. A properly maintained and installed N Core system would give a proper scientific data to help community scientists understand how to mitigate and combat air pollution. Oregon needs an N Core site in every community that has heavy industrial complexes bordering low-density residential neighborhoods. My neighborhood needs an N Core site with a TRS system. Hydrogen sulfide gases and methane gases are extremely harmful for humans. Project Canary air monitoring systems can properly monitor methane and hydrogen sulfide gases. Oregon does not have a single one of them. Currently, these toxins are heavily, not heavily regulated by the EPA or the state of Oregon. Pulp paper mills are a hazard to individuals who live around paper mills. Low-income individuals, disabled individuals, and multiracial individuals are more likely to live in neighborhoods that are within close proximity to heavy industrial sites such as paper mills. Paper mills and other factories that release toxic emissions daily never stop production during extreme weather events such as wildfires, extreme cold, ice, snow events, heat waves, heat domes, stagnant air warnings, and heavy wind and rain storms. The DEQ must create new rules that address these concerns I have just mentioned. Corporations like IP only care about profits instead of people. I feel strongly that the state of Oregon should put the health and safety of its citizens ahead of greed. Now, I'm going to be done here in a second, but I really appreciate what the individual just spoke about, about the DEQ's mission and what they've been doing the last, since Richard Whitman took over. But I really think that the DEQ can do more for people like my family and people around neighborhoods like my neighborhood that are low income, right next to big factories. So all I'm asking for is more air monitoring stations. So thank you for your time today. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
And thank you. Our next speaker today is Jessie Preston.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, perfect. My name is Jessie Preston. My family and I live in Springfield, Oregon, within a half a mile of the International Paper Mill complex. My eight-year-old son has been having issues with his eyes since shortly after we moved here. He went to the doctors, who told us that it was just allergies. They put him multiple different allergy medications to try to control it, but it never helped. We were finally referred to an ophthalmologist, who said that my son is suffering from severe allergic conjunctivitis and corneal neovascularization, which if not treated aggressively can lead to blindness. My son is now on four different eye medications that are administered three times a day. When the ophthalmologist learned that we lived near the paper mill, he said he believes that the chemicals coming out of the mill are responsible for my son's conditions. I researched it, and according to the CDC, many of the emissions that are released into the air from paper mills can cause negative health issues in people who live near paper mills, especially in children. One such emission is hydrogen sulfide, which is known to cause eye irritations like the ones my son is experiencing. Currently, there are no air monitoring devices in our area that monitor for hydrogen sulfide. I am asking that the Oregon DEQ place more air monitoring sites in neighborhoods like mine that are located near heavy industrial sites like International Paper. If we were able to monitor what is in the air, we would be able to better monitor the effects these industries are having on our health. I would also like to see regulations placed on industrial sites like International Paper that would limit the amount of emissions they are allowed to emit and would make it so that they could not emit emissions during heat domes and stagnant air warnings. I want to say thank you for allowing the public this opportunity to share their lived experiences, especially living close to these industrial sites. I've been trying to be heard for a long time, and finding these kind of outlets gives me hope that that somebody will care about the suffering that my son is going through because of greed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie.
And thank you. Our next speaker this morning is Mary Ann Cooper.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chair George and members of the Commission. For the record, Mary Ann Cooper here today on behalf of the Oregon Farm Bureau Federation. First of all, I want to thank you for letting us turn our videos on. I appreciate the opportunity to be able for you all to see my face and to see you all. I really hope that we can facilitate some sort of return to actual in-person engagement soon. The first part of my comment gets to, I think, some of the issues that have been borne by some of the remoteness of the COVID-19 pandemic. I feel I've engaged with the agency for over eight years as the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Oregon Farm Bureau, and in the last few years have noticed just a decrease in stakeholder engagement and outreach and communications. There's a lot of things that I first learn about when they appear on the agenda and a lot of agenda items that aren't populated till pretty close to the meeting, making it pretty hard to track and engage around some of what the agency is working on. So I'd really love to encourage a return to robust stakeholder engagement across all stakeholder groups, advance notice of meetings, advance engagement around topics that stakeholder groups will be concerned about, because we've really noticed a decline in that in the last two years. Secondly, I'm here to talk about an ARB topic, Agency Recommended Budget topic coming up, and that is your groundwater quality program. Oregon Farm Bureau and some of our agricultural partners have been encouraging DEQ to more heavily invest in groundwater quality since the 2017 legislative session and before that time, and have reiterated that request in every agency budget process and in front of the legislature every year since then. The program has had way too many cuts and made it difficult to administer and move forward on the guamas and to meaningfully address water quality, groundwater quality issues around the state. Our members live and work in rural areas, and so the groundwater out in rural areas is their drinking water, as well as their often irrigation water and water that they need to maintain their farms and ranches. And so the quality of that water is really critical to them. But the agency has under-invested in that program for years and now seems to want to take a task force approach of figuring out what comes next. We really strongly encourage the agency to build a robust funding program, move forward greater funding with that program, make any tweaks that are required around the edges of the program, but don't go back to the drawing board and waste another few years not addressing some of the groundwater quality issues in the state. We want to engage its partners. Fertilizer use is really important to farms and ranches, and we understand it can cause nitrate impacts. We just need that data. We need that information. We need that engagement from DEQ to be effective partners, and we really haven't received that for the last five or six years. So once again, I'll end with a plea to just better engage with myself, with my membership. I represent 7,000 farms and ranches around the state. We're happy to connect you to members in any part of the state, but we really need to be viewed as partners and engaged as stakeholders and to see that increased investment in that program sooner rather than later. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chair George. Commissioners, the last person in our speakers queue this morning is Nancy Heiser.
Welcome. Hi, I don't have my video going, and I don't know if you can do that, because it looks like it's going on my end, but hopefully you can hear me.
Nancy, it is going. We see you right ahead.
Well, I don't look good, but that's okay.
Oh, you're looking great today. Don't you worry about that.
Chair George and members of the Commission, my name is Nancy Heiser. I live in the Linton neighborhood of Portland, where we have been educating ourselves for years about the risks of living near the CEI hub tanks containing millions of gallons of flammable and toxic fuel on liquefiable soil. We applaud the passage of SB 1567. While the petroleum industry has consistently assured us of our safety, we're painfully aware of the multiplicity and magnitude of the problems we are facing, so we're continuing our efforts on multiple fronts. As you know, there has been no public oversight over the tank farms, and the CEI hubs' safety plans are confidential. Based on their oil spill response organization's capacity, the hubs' plans for a response are grossly inadequate. We wrote to you, Richard Whitman, in early June and haven't had a response nor seen indications on your website of steps taken since early June. In our letter, we strongly advocated that DEQ promptly obtain the certification necessary to move the actions of the fuel tanks and seismic stability, seismic stability, I should be able to do that, I'm a speech pathologist, program forward. We're aware a new director has been appointed, and there are plans to hire new staff and set up an advisory rules committee. The fuel tanks and seismic stability program can be a critical step in reducing the daily risk we all live with, human health, safety, and the environment, and to the economy. Can you tell us anything more about the certification process? We're hopeful that DEQ can fulfill some of our hopes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioners. At this time, there are no other people indicating an interest in speaking. Just to note on screen, there are the directions for anyone who perhaps came in later today. But Chair George, I see no other individuals wishing to, pardon me, wishing to present comment during public forum today.
Okay, well, thank you. And thank you to each person who did speak and share their thoughts with us today. It's always a very important part of our meeting. Well, Director, we're a bit ahead of schedule, but I don't think there's any reason that we couldn't see if there's any amendments needed to the draft minutes. And then the next report is the Commissioner report. So you guys get ready to take a long time, you know, really, really get something for us here, you know, let us know what you've been doing. So I think, you know, these next few items, we can certainly take care of, and, you know, maybe we'll end up having an extra long morning break.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George, for the record, Richard Whitman, DEQ Director. Just a note on Commissioners. So Commissioner Schlesker, as we noted, is absent today. That's an excused absence. She planned well in advance that she was not going to be here. And Commissioner Addington is en route back to Clamath Falls and will be joining us around 10 o'clock. So it's now 9:30, and I think what I would suggest is if the Commission wants to go ahead with draft, with review of the meeting minutes and Commissioner reports, Commissioner Addington may have a brief update to that as well, but basically get those two things done and then come back into session around 10 o'clock rather than maybe 10:30. And I will contact staff to try to get, make sure everybody's here to be able to move up the presentations on both the agency request budget and Clean Water State revolving on a little bit. I know you'll all be terribly disappointed if we are able to get out of here a little bit early this morning.
That might be it first. Let's not change it. All right, I think that sounds like a good plan. Any other, any objections to that? No, okay, so let's do that. Commissioners, we've all received the minutes in advance in reviewing them. Has anybody noted a need for amendment? No. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, and all approving. Say aye.
Aye.
All right, that will get the job done. Motion is approved. Our minutes are approved. Okay, our Commissioner reports. Now we are ready for your full presentation with slides and handouts. So who wishes to go first?
I'm happy to go, just, I think for me. In our reports, but I just want to acknowledge in my other role within the city, the Clean Energy Fund did just earlier this week approve about $107 million in grants to projects, which I think are going to be a really strong example and offer a lot of opportunities for lessons learned for DEQ's climate investment program, just in terms of what we are seeing, in terms of the investments we're needing to make to get into a lot of different homes that have had a lot of deferred investments and what it's taking to make upgrades there. And so, you know, some initial numbers we put together, which I think it's actually going to improve as we refine our data over time, is we're spending roughly about $200, $200 and $217 or so per metric ton of emissions reductions, but that's actually not even accounting for the economic benefits going to those households. So net all in, it's going to probably be lower than that, but we're starting to just get a lot more, a better sense of what it's taking to get into communities that haven't seen these investments. And so that's something that I, when we get that information, to be able to share that with you.
That sounds very, very valuable. Thank you for that.
That's it for me, otherwise. I think obviously I've got several, it looks like with staff, we've got several meetings coming up ahead of briefings, and I hope to at least in the next meeting we'll be able to report out about that, really get to work with the Oregon Department of Ag on the MOU, but those are still outstanding, so we'll come back around to that.
Great, thank you.
So just a note about the Department of Agriculture. Alexis Taylor, the Director of the Oregon Department of Agriculture, has been nominated for a position as, I think I will get this right, Assistant Secretary for U.S. Department of Agriculture for, I think it's Commerce and Trade or something like that, basically the positions that lead international trade person for agriculture in the country. And so it's an enormous honor for her, and I believe she will actually be transitioning and leaving the Department of Agriculture here in early August, if I remember correctly. So it's imminent. Lauren Henderson, who's the Assistant Director at Department of Agriculture, has been there for a long time and knows the agency back and forth, has been a great partner to us, will be, I believe, interim Director for a while here. So there's also been some turnover in the sense of, and this is a little bit longer ago, but Stephanie Page, who a number of you worked with, is now at the Watershed Enhancement Board as the Deputy OWE. So a little bit of movement in personnel in Department of Agriculture. We put our work with them on the memorandum of agreement update continues and look forward to having Commissioner Barasso engaged in that as well.
Yeah, so Greg has taken over from the OWE liaison position, so he's up for their meeting next week. We had the internal auditor, so I don't know if that will be, if you're going to discuss, yeah.
We could talk about that now, should we, like, Commissioner?
We do need to find a new one. So that's the search process at the moment, so maybe actually.
Yeah, so as you all know, Valerie Wiglin was our internal auditor and doing just frankly, in my opinion, a wonderful job. She unfortunately had to retire for some personal reasons, and so we started, we started the recruitment. We have an initial set of applications, and we've actually extended the deadline a little bit for internal auditor. So if anybody out there is interested and or knows of anyone who may be interested in their internal audit position, we're looking. And in the meantime, we do have a contract with Oregon State University, Dave's last name, but at any rate, there are a few internal audit functions that we're continuing via that resource, but a lot of stuff is on pause now until we get a new internal auditor and get that up and going.
Yeah, so my duties outside of the Commission have been a little light lately, and I kind of appreciate that, because it's been very busy at the university. So I don't know if you've heard, but we do have a new university president, Dr. Jaffe Murphy. She was the dean at the School of Engineering at UCLA. So it's the first female president that we've had at the university, and she is of Indian immigrant descent, so also the first immigrant president that we've had in that regard. So she just starts, started in June, so for the first time in a while, we're kind of fully staffed in our senior leadership at the university, which is fun. She seems like she'll be really great. You also might have heard, because there's been a little bit of press releases, but we were successful in getting a new grant from NIEHS that's called, we call it the Aspire Center, but it's a part of their new P to C centers, which is for accelerating children's environmental health research translation. And it's a, it's a different kind of beast for NIEHS. Instead of kind of doing the free-range toxicology of environmental epi, this is really about, you know, a lot of environmental hazards that impact children's health, and this is really about trying to accelerate solutions into policy practice and programming. So we do have a pilot project application that's out that we'll award at the end of this month, and there's been a lot of interest around wildfire smoke education and things like that in early childhood schools, taking it out through 4H. So I do know that the DEQ has a really active kind of education program, EPA does as well. So when we get, when we see who in the community wants to kind of lead those efforts, I'm hoping that we maybe have a working kind of workshop so that we can work together and really find synergies and make sure that people are getting the right messages that are accurate, actionable, and accessible. So that's kind of the focus, is kind of providing up. There's also interest in trying to increase the uptake of childhood bloodletts, so that is more with OHA's efforts. But it's childhood bloodletts, kind of an interesting one in the sense that when you find children that do kind of cluster together with, with blood poisoning, it does tend to indicate an environmental signal. So there is funding through the federal government, if those kind of patterns are observed, to replace water mains and things like that. So maybe there'll be something, we're using better surveillance techniques, we might be able to also identify environmental signals, but I think a lot of that work will largely be out of OHA, so I'm just kind of bringing this as a heads up in case you start to hear my name pop up around that. That's, that's what's happening. And then also working with early childhood learning centers and the networks of those frontline workers to kind of address some of their environmental concerns and hazards, including COVID infection, disease release. So you'll start to see some action. We're finally fully staffed in that center, and that's kind of been my baby for the last couple months since we got it kind of staffed and I've been running and picking directions and themes, and we'll have this for five years. So looking for opportunities to try to get messaging in the community. It's very much an And we'll have this for five years, so looking for opportunities to try to give messaging in the community, it's very much an outward facing, community facing. Interface into the network that is the scientists at OSU, but also the scientists at the other five centers, which are at Hopkins, Penn State. Emory, USC, and I think it's Cincinnati, so. Opportunities, we would love to be able to find sources of synergy with DEQ as well. Oh, and we've also started doing our water testing in Jackson County, so you'll see the Be Well Project, we're doing free water testing. As part of an intervention, so we're testing our sedimentary trade and lead for anybody who has a private well in Jackson County as part of an intervention, so. Do you hear that?
Could I touch on, so these are private wells.
These are private wells on people's homes.
And are they, is there any effort to stratify the geography of where the testing's occurring, or is it just purely voluntary or?
It's voluntary into this study, and the study is designed to ultimately test an intervention to try to help. Assist homeowners that have a hazard in their well, select appropriate water treatment, so we're also working with OHA as a partner on that. They're providing usual care and then we have a, a design intervention that, so we're doing a randomized control trial to test that. We are stratifying it in the sense that we want to make sure that we're getting a big opportunity for low income. Folks to be able to participate since they tend to have lower participation rates in studies and accounts. So we do have a stratified outreach plan that's kind of based on socioeconomic status at the county. Small census track levels in watersheds.
Do you know if the data from the study are going to be. Shared with the database that OHA and DEQ?
No, this will not become part of the real estate transaction database, this is, the data will be for the homeowners, we'll help them interpret it.
Okay.
But what I imagine will happen is just with this increased activity, there's going to be kind of an increased awareness and increased chatter around that. Issues in water safety, especially, we're kind of trying to develop sensitive plans to reach out into those areas that were impacted by wildfire. And we don't want to invite people to participate in the study, but these homes burned down, so we're kind of, but we will move through those neighborhoods as well, so. You might hear more about that, you might, part of the information that we've gathered is how people can learn about state programs. Including loan programs and things like that to. Really be appropriate for specifically a little low income in around buildings, rebuilding's have to cancel rebuilding laws. So there might become an increase bubble up or not. Yeah. So heavy on the research lately, which is a lot of.
Good, good, that's your happy place, I think.
It kind of is. Teaching's fun too. I'm learning how to interact with policy.
Okay, so one of the, the groups that I have updated you folks on, that I participated in, is that. HB fifty oh six work group, this old regional water planning work group, and has been tasked with trying to make a recommendation back to the legislature. About whether or not regional water planning is something that the state should continue to invest in. Richard, did you attend, or somebody probably from DEQ, maybe Jennifer or somebody, the, the meeting in Bend they had recently?
I believe, I believe Jennifer or. One of our water quality managers attended, I was not able to attend.
Well, and I had intended to, and then unfortunately I, I had, you know, some family kind of emergency issues come up, and so I wasn't able to attend. Which is kind of too bad, I think they were hoping that they could bring kind of some of the, the work that's been bubbling and the discussions that have been there to, to. Give some sort of action point. I think I've shared that I think this group's, has very challenging kind of mandate. Both that in, by its nature, regional water planning and the potential success of it really has to do with what are those regional influences, key players. Resources to support something like the regional planning. And a recognition that that playing field is not equal in all regions of the state and that the players do not have equal access to the support they need to affect. To participate effectively. And, and those have been open parts of the discussion. And it's been really interesting too, I and a couple of the tribal representatives were asked to give some input about how the tribes come to this table. And so we did that, best of our ability, and again, you see very different experiences, you see someone like the Warm Springs. Who is very invested, quite literally, partner in dam operation within their seeded lands. Literally built in to the systems that control water. And then other places, maybe like the Umatilla Basin, where very large scale deals were done to both benefit agriculture and the tribe. But pulling that level of deal off, it doesn't happen everywhere, and plus you don't always have the Columbia River conveniently flowing by, not too far away. So there's also unique realities, you know, to, to some of these things where, you know, you can't pull off a Umatilla Basin water project. Somewhere you don't have those kind of resources, so you know, it works well there. And then the reality that I spoke to, which is most of the tribes come to the table, you know, having been terminated for thirty years. And building back their governance from scratch. And some of those tribes, you know, our cousins out in Burns or, or down in Klamath. Just even having the resources to participate in all these state forums that everybody wants you to participate in, you know, they simply may not have the capacity to do that. Let alone the kind of engineering capacity or legal representation to, to participate in higher levels. And yet, other members of the, the group see the uncertainty around tribal water rights, potential reserve tribal water rights as, as an unknown. So we talked a little bit about that, or at least enough to say, yes, and, don't think anything's going to happen about that very soon, right? Even for those few tribes that have gotten water right settlements, it takes thirty years, how long did?
Well, Klamath is forty in county.
Klamath is forty in county. I was working for Umatilla when they got their water rights settlement underway, there's still nowhere, nowhere near resolution. So, you know, it is kind of a yes and situation, yes, those issues are real. But the, the task of this group is to come up with meaningful recommendations that potentially are actionable. Before the, you know, within a year, and believe me, nothing's going to happen on that scale within a year, so. Sometimes you have to just simply work with the realities that you have, and I think this is one of those. It was very interesting to see in my email though, that apparently the group was thinking that they needed to make some sort of statement. About tribal sovereignty should be honored in regional planning and. I guess this is just about engaging with tribes and ensuring that they are participants and have a seat at the table. So anyhow, I'll have to take a closer look with that and, and talk with my colleagues. So, you know, it's kind of hard to say what will, what will come of that effort. But I suspect that, you know, some degree of regional planning will continue probably, where there are opportunities. And perhaps we can make recommendations about, you know, best ways or best practices. Where those opportunities lie. The Oregon tribes do speak often on regularly or semi-regularly, I guess I would say. At the last meeting, it was interesting to hear. From Chairwoman Catherine from the Umatilla, that she was under the impression that there was not enough communication between DEQ and the tribes. And, you know, that, that may or may not be true, I do think one of the things that is challenging is. You know, any very large and complex agencies that just like we hear about in our meetings, you know, has thirteen things going at any one time. It can be very difficult to know when and how to connect and at what level. I think we've also had conversations at this table about how Oregon tribal leadership, they submitted a letter largely about wanting to engage at a deeper level with the state of Oregon. In regard to the governor's water plan and the work that's going on around it. It's interesting to find that as of my last Oregon tribal leaders meeting, tribal leaders think there's been no response to that. And yet there are meetings at the staff level that are occurring that, to my understanding. The state believes is the response to that. And I don't know what those involve, they may very well be very good meetings, but clearly there is not. Open or engaged policy communication, because, you know, it was news to them when I said, no, these meetings are happening. And they said, well, we've heard nothing, we, we, how could that possibly be? So what, what I offer to do to the degree that I can is simply bring this to the table, say it out loud. And then say, and how can we make that better, and is there any way I can help? So, you know, I do have access to this group very regularly. And I think a, a conversation is needed to, to talk about what has happened. And if we aren't communicating at the policy level, what, what do we need to do differently about that? So I wanted to bring that suggestion to the table, would be happy to follow up with it.
Chair George, before we go on, just briefly, I, I have been participating in those meetings. DEQ did a presentation to that forum, I think two weeks ago, and. It isn't, it, it present, it has been an information sharing forum, which is a first step, I won't say the only first step. Frankly, I think state agencies have been learning a lot in terms of what tribes have been doing around water and restoration. So I think it's, it, it, the staff level, it's been useful. I have raised with the project leaders, and I'm not a project reader. This issue about lack of communication. About the fact that this is, is going on particularly leadership, tribal leadership and. So that conversation has started and I don't know exactly, I'm not driving that particular bus, I don't know, I don't know exactly how that's going to turn out. But I'm hopeful that this will. Continue to build relationship and understanding between agencies and, and tribal resources staff. And hopefully eventually lead to some discussions that are more on a government friendly, government or state tribal leadership. Probably more appropriately putting it. Level. So we'll see, we'll see what happens. I, I have been investing time and effort though, and. In that piece, frankly, more of the regional water planning forum, just because I think it's, I think it's really important work and. I don't know where it'll go, but there's, there's some promise there that it could, could be the basis for more work together.
Well, that's good to hear, and I don't doubt that a much closer, perhaps more frank and open dialogue at that level is very valuable. To just understand more about what issues the tribes have been working on, investing in, considerably important. And certainly, you know, the tribes, they were always going to be water and fisheries issues together, and of course, co-coquel, and I think so let's are working on agreements with ODFW.
Yes.
In regard to co-management responsibilities and Grand Ron is, is working on efforts to initiate that as well. So, you know, for the tribes, those two issues are always very integrated. So yeah, I, you know, I would say that that probably is very valuable. Like you say, then we also need to not let it stop there, and we do need to have the level of government, government engagement that was requested. In the all tribe letter to the governor, so I think I can do to assist with that, I, I hope to do. And then I guess that, you know, the last thing that I'll just share is, you know, for example, yesterday's presentation about the built environment and the work that's going on around that. I think was really fascinating, I think was remarkable, it was interesting to see such a. You know, such a, I guess, famous or infamous scene, such as Salida Falls, raised as a very good example. Of, an example of, of environmental injustice and social injustice. And, and then of course, when we're talking about inbuilt infrastructure, you think about the kind of problems that have, you know, widely been shared about the Warm Springs tribe. Need drinking water, infrastructure for safe drinking water. And again, just those of us who know our cousins over there, spend time over there, know the state of some of their buildings, where they just locked off a basement and nobody can use it. But they can't build a new one, so they use the top floor, right, because you have all kinds of indoor air chronic problems. So, you know, very often, we know that, you know, state regulation is not going to apply on reservation. And yet, there are often times that we have the same goals and working together might make tremendous sense. And so it, that just really came home to me, especially, you know, when you choose to use and, and, and it was an excellent example, but you choose to show such a dramatic. Impact, well then I think we need to step up to that and say, okay, and if these are the kind of realities associated with the kind of injustice. That has historically been perpetrated, then, you know, how do we become part of the solution? So again, as that project moves forward and others, I'd just like to, where I can be a resource. To let tribes know about what their opportunities are and where partnerships might make sense or do make sense. Between the state and tribes, because, you know, very often, everybody kind of expects the tribes to, to look to EPA, and there's a lot of very good reasons for that. That is the federal trustee, there's, there's funding extremes there sometimes, and a lot of times there aren't. And we ultimately, the people who live here, so I think where it makes sense to say, where my partnerships make sense, I want to encourage us to keep doing that. And I think that's all I have, unless anybody has questions for any of us.
Chair George, could I comment on your comments on the built environment? I would like that strategic plan, yes, I appreciate you noticing, and I was seeing this yesterday in the, the comments and questions, just that. The strategic plan and probably for those who, who looked at it and, and read it, it's, it's a different kind of strategic plan than I think. A lot of us are used to, whether that's in, you know, government work or, or, you know, non-public work, either way. Strategic plans typically, I think, have these, you know, pretty specific and predictable goals. And what, what's interesting about the built environment plan, I think. You know, I don't want to speak for that team, but, but what strikes me about the plan is that it does not set out projects. And it, it doesn't say, you know, here are, you know, these five projects that we will accomplish within this particular time. Instead, it sets up a framework for interaction with people who should be helping to inform what projects we do and when and on what timeline. And so it's a, a different way of looking at it, it sets up a guidance for how we will approach our work. And, and really relies on partnership with others and hearing from others. Where we should be focused rather than DEQ saying, here's our focus area, just would you like to join us? So it's just a, it's starting in a different place in the process, I think, so. I'm really proud of the team that, that developed this, and I think some of this thinking, we'll talk about it later, will also help. With our strategic planning thinking for the agency, so thanks for, you know, noticing that, that work, because the staff did amazing. Work on that in our materials management program.
And, and I'll just add. That team also did a presentation to the Oregon Legislature in June and interim legislative days, and that. Garnered quite a bit of bipartisan interest and. I would almost say excitement about, about the program, which is always nice to see, and so big, big kudos to that team for. And it's, it's a team that includes this other notable thing, it's not just DEQ. It's DEQ and partners, and that's, that's a different model from a lot of what we typically do, that I think is very interesting.
While we are getting kudos, I came across the water quality interactive map that was put forth by the.
The integrated report map?
Yeah, that was consolidation of pesticides.
Oh, the pesticides, the pesticides, George, partnership data.
I thought it was fantastic, so whoever, the teams that put that together, I thought that was a wonderful. Easy to navigate, easy to understand, access to a bunch of water quality data. That I hope people actually use as a resource, I, I thought it was a terrific product.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and I'll note, again. We had a, we had, staff had been working on that and staff, not just at DEQ, but Oregon Department of Agriculture. And I believe some other agencies as well have been working on that tool, and we were, we were about ready to go out and we had a fair amount of. And we had a fair amount of input from stakeholders around the tool and communications, some of the communications messaging. And we listened and went back and made some changes. What was rolled out, and I think it's a much better product. And so again, it's a good example of how we can work, if we work collaboratively and get input from people off of the results. It takes things to take a little longer, but often they come out better. So part of what you see is a result of suggestions that we received.
I think, kudos. Well, that in turn reminds me, and let me know if I mentioned this last time. So somebody from EPA did reach out to me to see if there's any way, they have, I guess, you know, they've been working on this Columbia Toxic Reduction Initiative for a decade or more. I don't know to what degree DEQ engages with that, but they were just interested in talking about it, seeing if there's any opportunities for further engagement or collaboration. So it might just be worth mentioning. I don't really know to what degree DEQ is involved in.
We are aware of it and talking with EPA about it. There was significant funding for that effort, which frankly, Oregon Senator Mercury was largely responsible for. Thank you, Senator.
Yes.
And so I think it's five years of funding, and we're looking at what long-term, you know, not long-term, but what are the opportunities in that time span to do work that makes sense?
Excellent. Because, yeah, I think it's a substantial tranche of money.
I don't remember the exact amount, but it's at least tens of millions of dollars. Yeah.
Well, great. So we'll want to hear more about that, obviously, as you come up with those ideas.
Well, Chair George and Commissioners, we are still a little bit ahead of time.
Minutes ten.
Our next agenda item is scheduled for 10:30. We do have a break scheduled now. I know there's been some discussion with staff who are doing the budget presentation about possibly going earlier. But I think we're also close enough that we can just start a little bit early, perhaps. And I'm looking at Stephanie. If we can get in touch with the Clean Water Revolving Fund staff and have them start maybe 10 minutes early, that would be my suggestion, and otherwise not disrupt the schedule.
Agreed. If that works for them, fine. If not, then thirty will be all right.
Well, and thank you, Chair George and Director Whitman. This is Stephanie Caldera, your commission assistant. I will connect with staff and over this break and see if they can start a little bit earlier. If they cannot, another option, I do know Deputy Director Felden spoke a bit to strategic planning. So if that is a potential option for a good time interstertiary, perhaps that could be something as well. But I will report back to the commission over your break. And we'll hope to see the Clean Water State Revolving Fund staff a few minutes earlier.
That sounds great, Stephanie. Thank you.
So I think we're suggesting that we recess until 10:20 and then come back. We'll either be doing strategic plan or Clean Water Revolving Fund, depending on who's ready to go.
Sounds good. 10:20.
And thank you all. I will pause the recording and mute all lines during the break.
Yeah, Chair.
Right on cue. Turn it over to you, Director.
Thank you, Chair George, for Richard Whitman, DEQ Director. And next up, we have a presentation on a proposed rulemaking around updates to our Clean Water State Revolving Fund rules. And Jennifer Weigel and I believe Chris Marco are going to be giving this presentation. So Jennifer, I'm going to hand it off to you.
All right. Thank you, Director Whitman. Good morning, Chair George and members of the commission. I'm Jennifer Weigel, I'm the Water Quality Division Administrator here at DEQ. Really excited to be able to have our Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program folks here to be able to talk to you about work that they are doing to both update the rules and prepare for additional monies that are going to be coming into the state's Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program through the bipartisan infrastructure law appropriations in the bill that was passed last November. There's some really exciting opportunities that this additional influx of money brings. There's also some additional expectations that the federal government is placing on states and how they manage and loan out these funds, as well as a principal forgiveness aspect of it. Those expectations align very well with Oregon's interests and how we administer this program to get the greatest financial assistance where there is the greatest need. So today, Chris Marco, the program lead for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program, is going to walk you through the presentation. We also have Lynn Barlow, who is the program manager for this program, is also available as questions or discussions come up. She's also available to engage in any questions you might have as we go through this presentation. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chris to get us going.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Commissioners, Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso, Commissioner Kyle, Commissioner Addington. It's a pleasure being here. My name is Chris Marco. I'm the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program Coordinator at Oregon DEQ. I wanted to say that I was preparing for this meeting, and I looked at the backgrounds of the commissioners. And I'm really pleased and thrilled to learn about your backgrounds involving natural resources, sustainability, energy, health. I have a background in natural resource management and community economic development with a degree from the University of Oregon. And I've worked in this state that I love for 30 years to help improve communities and the environment. So I'm really honored, and it's a pleasure being here before you today to share this information about our program, our efforts with the rulemaking and the bipartisan infrastructure law. So thank you. Next slide. So for today, we will present updates on the bipartisan infrastructure law, key provisions and priorities as a context for the rulemaking. We'll talk about the rulemaking scope that we are initiating. We're early in the process, so this will be a fairly high-level summary of the scope. We'll talk about the key rulemaking milestones and timeline. And then we'll talk more about the bill implementation as the framework for the rulemaking, and also activities that the program is engaged with regarding priorities. And lastly, we will cover how it all fits together in terms of the program activities, the priorities, bill implementation, key milestones and timeline as it relates to rulemaking. Next slide. When we were putting this together, I worked closely with Richard and Jennifer and Lynn. We thought it would be helpful to frame the presentation in terms of a problem statement. Here is what we've developed to consider as far as a framework, to focus the rulemaking on, the bigger outcomes, how we're intending to do good with the rulemaking, with the program, in helping communities throughout Oregon. Communities do continue to face challenges with meeting water quality and infrastructure needs in Oregon, particularly disadvantaged and economically distressed communities that have limited capacity, ability to afford rate increases, to plan and implement improvement projects, limited access to resources and financing for projects. I can speak to this firsthand as someone who's been involved with communities for many years at the ground level, providing technical assistance, knowing that smaller communities tend to have more compliance issues. They have less technical managerial and financial capacity. They have more limited economic base to take on projects, to afford debt. And oftentimes, they don't know where to go, where to start, or what's available to them in terms of financing and access to resources. And these are all things that our program continues to work on and will bolster more with these opportunities coming up with the bipartisan infrastructure law. Next slide. Thank you. Here are some opportunities that we are looking forward to in terms of the bipartisan infrastructure law. We will receive significant increases in funding under the bipartisan infrastructure law over the next five years. We will be able to provide more financing for water pollution control projects, which is our mission. The Oregon Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program will provide more principal forgiveness for loans, particularly disadvantaged and economically distressed communities. And this is a requirement under the bipartisan infrastructure law that we will talk about more. The Oregon Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program will utilize new resources for technical assistance to help communities plan, develop, finance, and manage projects. This is something new under the Clean Water Act. It's coming with the bipartisan infrastructure law and will be built into the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program over the next five years and beyond. Next slide, please. Thank you. In terms of some of the key provisions and priorities of the bipartisan infrastructure law, the law was signed in November, November 15th of 2021. Our program has been working diligently, dedicating significant time and effort to address the priorities and provisions of the law and the guidance developed by EPA, which was issued in March of 2022. The BIL, or Bill, provides EPA with funds through Clean Water State Revolving Fund Programs over a five-year period. It also does provide funding for safe drinking state revolving fund programs as well. And we're coordinating very closely with our drinking water program partners, Oregon Health Authority and Business Oregon, to coordinate our efforts, our messaging, to align our strategies as much as we can. There is a requirement for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Programs to provide more principal forgiveness. We'll talk more about capitalization grants that we work with, the supplemental cap grant, where we will be required to provide 49% of that cap grant amount as principal forgiveness. As mentioned, there's a new provision that provides resources to state revolving fund programs, Clean Water SRF, for technical assistance. This is really exciting, and we are mobilizing to enter into a contract with a technical assistance provider, or in the future, it may be multiple providers, to assist these communities in meeting the challenges, some of which have been described earlier. There is a focus on emerging contaminants and a specific capitalization grant that is dedicated toward addressing emerging contaminants. That is a priority for EPA. Another priority for EPA is addressing disadvantaged communities. And what that means for our program, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, is affordability criteria. That is a specific term. Those are two words that are explicit in the Clean Water Act, required for Clean Water State Revolving Fund Programs to address. There are environmental justice priorities we are looking at and analyzing for consideration and how to incorporate environmental justice into our program. And there are Build America by America requirements that we are anticipating will impact communities and projects. Guidance is pending from EPA on this requirement. Next slide. In terms of the capitalization grants, we wanted to give you a picture of the various funding streams that we receive from EPA and that we will be receiving from EPA and that are available from EPA. First of all, we have what is called our annual base capitalization grant or cap grant. That's something that the program has applied for and received for many years on an annual basis. It is an ongoing source of funds that helps supplement our money. In addition, as you're aware, our loan program lends money out to communities that is repaid or revolved, hence the term revolving loan fund, revolved back into the fund so that we can lend that money out again. So that's state recycled funds from the federal government that helps sustain the program. And then on top of that, we continue to get our annual base cap grant. That amount for federal fiscal year 2022 is $13,071,000. In addition to the annual base cap grant, we will be applying for and receiving the Bill Supplemental Capitalization Grant. The amount for fiscal year 2022 is $20,271,000. So as you can see, we will be getting a significant addition of funding to our program. There's also an emerging contaminants cap grant in the amount of $1,64,000. This will be available to Clean Water State Revolving Fund Programs, including Oregon. We are not required to apply, and we are looking at how our program may be able to address emerging contaminants. Some key provisions related to the cap grants. As mentioned, 49% of the bill cap grant, the supplemental cap grant, as it's called, of that amount must be provided as principal forgiveness on the whole for the program. As mentioned, there's technical assistance available. 2% of each of these cap grants is available for technical assistance. And as mentioned, we are mobilizing to contract with a TA provider using the 2% of the annual base cap grant, which is available to us and we just applied for, for technical assistance. And as I mentioned, the emerging contaminants cap grant of $1,64,000 is available each year at that amount. Next slide, please. In terms of estimated bill funding available for Oregon Clean Water State Revolving Fund over the next five years, we know the amount for fiscal year, this is federal fiscal year 2022, is $20,271,000. That's been allocated. We are intending to apply for those funds early next calendar year and receive those funds spring of next year to implement. In terms of future years, the following numbers are estimates. They are not official and not allocated. You can see there will be an increase expected in fiscal year, federal fiscal year 2023 at 23-plus million. For federal fiscal year 2024, 25 million plus. For 2025, federal fiscal year, 27,872,179, and the same amount the following federal fiscal year 2026, for a total of 125,324,381 over the next five years. And this is in addition to the annual base cap grants that we will be applying for and receiving during that time. I should mention that for the cap grant, the base cap grant, that amount, $13 million, is slightly less than what we've been receiving over the past several years. The amount that we've averaged over the past several years for that base cap grant is around 17 million. You may have heard about congressional-directed spending. That money has come off the appropriation for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. And that is why that amount got reduced this year. and that is why that amount got reduced this year. And it's being determined whether or not those funds will continue to be available in future years. And if so, it may affect those annual base cap grant amounts as well. But those amounts are unknown at this time. Next slide, please. So for the rulemaking, in order for us to address the requirement of principal forgiveness, meeting that 49% amount of the supplemental bill cap grant, we will need to increase the amount of principal forgiveness that we can offer on a per loan basis. Currently, in our rule, we have limits for how much we can award for principal forgiveness per loan. We can provide up to 50% of the loan amount or $500,000, whichever is less. And in order for us to meet the total amount that we need to provide for that bill supplemental cap grant, which at $21 million for the cap grant, estimating 49% of that, around $10 million, we believe that we're going to need to have more flexibility in increasing the amount of principal forgiveness we can offer on a per loan basis. Our program is currently analyzing the various scenarios and this is something that we need to address in our rule to meet that requirement for the bill. Affordability criteria. EPA has encouraged Clean Water State Revolving Fund Programs to revisit affordability criteria that is required under the Clean Water Act. Clean Water Act has specific requirements for what our program needs to include, Clean Water State Revolving Fund Programs across the country needs to include in affordability criteria. Currently, we use the Business Oregon Distressed Index that meets those requirements under the Clean Water Act. We're revisiting that criteria and doing analysis on incorporating other aspects of economically disadvantaged and environmental justice considerations with affordability criteria. For the rulemaking, it's important to recognize our thinking is to reduce the level of detail in rule so that we can incorporate additional considerations for the program and look to our intended use plan to include our affordability criteria, which is required by EPA. EPA does require Clean Water State Revolving Fund Programs to include affordability criteria in our intended use plan. Related to this.
Chris, this is really helpful. Can you just, when you say affordability criteria, can you just spell that out a little bit, a little bit more? I mean, I'm hearing that, but I just want to make sure I understand it because I see the various. I mean, we've also talked about using the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund for sub-take-take replacement programs. So I'm trying to understand when we talk about affordability, we're talking about household affordability. What's the framework of that?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair Barasso. The Clean Water Act requires affordability criteria to include income considerations and unemployment considerations as well as population trends and other considerations by a state. Currently, we use the distressed index by Business Oregon and that index does address those requirements. It does address income considerations. It does address unemployment considerations. And in addition, we have language in our rule that addresses the population trend issue. So when we look at affordability criteria currently, we can provide principal forgiveness. So affordability criteria is one of the criteria that we award principal forgiveness for. So if a community, a city is on the distressed index, if they're considered distressed, we can provide principal forgiveness on a loan for a project in that community. If the city is not distressed, we can look at the status of the county. And if the county is distressed, we can provide principal forgiveness for that community, that city or entity, eligible entity in that county for principal forgiveness. So that's how it currently works. Does that help?
It does. It does. I've got other questions, but I'll hold on.
Jennifer, did you have something for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, and Chris, you can verify this too, that under the federal requirements, there's kind of a minimum definition of affordability and the types of factors that go into that affordability. And, you know, based on what we have right now, we clearly meet the minimum. Part of our interest going forward is taking a little bit harder look at those criteria and understanding what additional factors should potentially be considered there and then also looking at how those get weighted. So I think that's right, Chris. Yeah, I mean, that's we, there's kind of how we've been operating. But I think we see an opportunity to, you know, for incremental improvement and in terms of how we think about these things to really assure that, that when we look at these metrics, we're meeting the greatest needs. And we go in there and that the principal forgiveness reflects that. And I think we've got some opportunities to think about the scale at which we consider economic distress, you know, county, city. You know, there's different ways and that's part of the reason of pulling together the group that we're pulling together for the advisory committee process. And I know Chris is going to talk about that more in just a minute.
Yes. Thank you, Jennifer. And to be clear, our affordability criteria works. EPA is very satisfied with our affordability criteria. We actually provide a substantial amount for distressed communities under the criteria, many of which are also small communities under 10,000 population. I was just looking at our IUP and the majority of communities that are on our IUP are eligible for principal forgiveness under our current affordability criteria and they are smaller communities. So I just want to convey that we are already doing a lot of this. We want to consider how we can make it better and how to direct resources and financing toward those communities most in need. Given the opportunities that we have to provide more principal forgiveness, this is a way that EPA is encouraging and actually requiring more principal forgiveness. And they're also encouraging programs to revisit their criteria to be, to be more targeted, to be of greater needs. So related to this is how do we rank and score projects? Currently, we have detailed language in rule about how we do this. And again, with our thinking and our intended use plan as a document that we use to document affordability criteria and project ranking and scoring, which is a requirement under EPA. We have a, we have a project priority list in the intended use plan. We are also looking at ways that we may adjust how we evaluate projects given any adjustments to affordability criteria and our environmental justice considerations. So there's that language in rule we're looking at. And again, we have not developed recommendations for the advisory committee. We're early in the process. And again, this is the scope that we're looking at, that we think we need to address as requirements and as priorities that we're encouraged to address. The intended use plan, I've referred to that several times now. That is really a key document that's required by EPA annually. It's where we identify applications and projects that we intend to fund over the year and we update that twice a year. So we have three, basically three IUP versions throughout the year. And we add new applications to that IUP as we review and score them three times a year. There's a public comment period on the IUP. So there's transparency about how we conduct our business. And as I mentioned, we're required to include our affordability criteria and our project ranking and scoring in the IUP. So part of our thinking is that we want to remove detail from rule and incorporate detail in our IUP as we make adjustments to the program addressing these priorities. And to go along with all of this is the environmental justice. As we're all aware, this is a priority at the national level. It's a priority at the state level. It's a priority for DEQ and it's a priority for our program. It's complex and we are currently looking at various tools and metrics for consideration that address economically distressed conditions of communities as well as pollution burden, communities burdened by water pollution. As an example, so there's a combination of considerations with environmental justice, environmentally, as well as economically disadvantaged and underserved communities. And again, we have not developed recommendations. We are currently analyzing various tools and developing some metrics for consideration that we'll be sharing with the advisory committee as well. Keeping in mind, to wrap this version of the presentation up, our rulemaking really is focused on meeting the requirements first of the BIL and that's addressing the principal forgiveness limitations in rule. And then thinking about the detail in rule that we could move into our IUP to continue meeting requirements of EPA, to be nimble, to be responsive to community needs and to consider incorporating environmental justice metrics in the future. Next slide. Thank you. So here's a picture of some key milestones focusing on the rulemaking itself. We have appointed a rulemaking advisory committee. We have a diverse group that covers representation from local government, state government, federal government. We have the Northwest Portland Area Board of Indian Health represented. We have CASA of Oregon that serves farm workers. We have Sustainable Northwest. We have Land Partnership. We have Rural Community Assistance Corporation that focuses on rural communities. We have League of Oregon Cities. We have Association of the Oregon Association of Water Utilities. We have Morrow County. And our intent is that we have, we have Oregon Housing and Community Services. We have a whole host of diverse interests ranging from a wide variety of services for disadvantaged communities throughout the state, health, housing, even energy, utilities, water and wastewater, rural communities. And we put that group together and appointed them. We are scheduling three meetings, July through September. And our first meeting is scheduled next week, next Friday. And the purpose of that meeting is to provide an overview of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program and the scope of the rulemaking, as well as the bipartisan infrastructure law, and really to engage the committee about why, why they're there, their interests, and to really lay the groundwork for the next several months. And also present our initial thoughts about environmental justice considerations. We are not proposing any actions or recommendations to the committee for meeting one. And as I mentioned, simultaneously, we are conducting analysis on these areas of priority and related to the rulemaking so that we come back to meeting two and we do focus more on rule language and propose changes to the rule. Moving into meeting three, where we will intend to propose recommendations that we plan to bring to the Environmental Quality Commission for Action in January of 2023. Next slide. So stepping back out, while we're working on the rulemaking, we're also working on plans for implementing the bipartisan infrastructure law. I mentioned technical assistance. We are drafting a request for proposals at this time that we're going to be working through procurement process, intending to contract with a technical assistance provider. Or in the future, as I mentioned, we may consider more than one. Again, the technical assistance comes with each cap grant. It's available with each cap grant. So we want to take advantage of that as early as we can. I mentioned the Build America by America. We are awaiting guidance from EPA on how that will affect projects. We've heard some things from EPA, but nothing has been in writing in terms of how BABA will be implemented. So that's a significant piece that we are strategizing around. We're preparing for outreach and education of our staff and communities on the impacts of BABA. Emerging contaminants, this is an area that we are looking into and determining how we may be able to address emerging contaminants. Harmful algal blooms is an area of interest for us. Initially, we heard that algal blooms would be considered under the emerging contaminants. But when the official guidance came out from EPA, it was determined that they are not eligible, I should say. If, if a contaminant is regulated and it's related to the formation of algal blooms, which is often the case, then addressing algal blooms is not eligible under this particular category. We're working with EPA to find ways that we may be able to further address harmful algal blooms. PFOS is a priority under this one. That tends to relate more to drinking water than contamination in the environment. And so we're assessing the need on this particular area and how we might be able to provide benefits with available funding. EPA requirements, this one is really key.
Chris, we have a question from Commissioner Kyle.
Hi, Chris. I really appreciate this. And I did actually have some questions around what was being classified as kind of emerging contaminants. But just to make sure, because the have thing is kind of interesting. So you would be able to address like nitrogen and phosphorus, the inputs, the precursors, but not necessarily the toxins that would be produced by a harmful algal bloom. Is that the distinction there?
It would actually be reverse of that. What we learned is that, you know, for like the phosphorus and the nitrates, those are regulated contaminants. And so the idea of emerging contaminants are contaminants that are not regulated. They're emerging, but they, you know, they're, they're known, but they're not regulated. And so we, we wouldn't be able to address contaminants that are leading to the formation of algal blooms. We were told that we could address treatment of algal blooms. And there are projects that we're aware of in the climate space and actually about, you know, oxygenation technology that can address algal blooms after the fact. So that's the, what we've heard from EPA in terms of focus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to horn in on your point, Commissioner Kyle, but this seems quite frustrating. With harmful algal blooms, the problem they are, continuing to be, I would hope that we could get ahead of that a little bit and not wait until the critical harm is being done, both to human resources and natural. Director, do you know if there's any work being done on this to help people get out ahead of the problem instead of only wait till you're already in the middle of it?
Well, I'm going to let Chris give you a more detailed response to that. But I think some of the the base and supplemental cap grant funds from EPA can be used for some of those actions directed at nitrogen and phosphorus.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. And this is something that internally, we're having discussions within our water quality program with our non-point source pollution folks, our watershed folks. With our non-point source pollution folks, our watershed folks, there's, there's an interest in finding ways to address harmful algal blooms. If not under the emerging contaminants, which again, we're talking with EPA about this, we've raised it early on. That, that we would, we would like to use funds under that for, for that purpose. We, we can use our existing funding and the, the bill supplemental funding. For projects that address harmful algal blooms as eligible non-point source or eligible projects with ineligible water. So it's not excluding us from addressing those. And we are working on them internally in terms of strategy. We were just hoping that, you know, the emerging contaminants focus could, could address it, but. It sounds like it, it can't at this time in terms of prevention. And we're looking at ways to do that under, you know, other pots of money that are available and that we're accessing as eligible.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Kyle. EPA requirements, and I know we're coming up on, we're, we're with time. Appreciate the interest. EPA requirements, there are a lot of requirements logistically that we need to meet in terms of these different cap grants. We have to manage multiple cap grants now, we have to track the funding for the base cap grant and the bill cap grant distinctly. We have to identify certain information in our I U P to that extent. So there are new things that are coming with this funding that we're needing to address as priorities. We have a great relationship with EPA, both at the national level as well as EPA Region 10. We're known for raising good questions and, and suggestions in the development of the bill guidance. And, you know, we are, we are in very good standing in this regard with EPA and we're continuing to work with them. To make sure we're meeting those requirements for the cap grants. Program coordination and stakeholder engagement, this is something we're very active with. I mentioned coordinating with our drinking water program colleagues and agencies. Oregon Health Authority, Business Oregon, USDA Rule Development, we're reconvening. A coordination group around water and wastewater infrastructure in the state. We've engaged with League of Oregon Cities, we've had sessions with legislative offices, the Legislative Fiscal Office.
Please me, Chris, one more time, we do have a question for Vice Chair Barasso. And then I'm going to encourage us to let our staff finish their presentation, Vice Chair.
I, I should have probably let you finish, Chris, thank you, Chair George. I, I, I think it's, it's, it's really probably a question at the end, it's really at a higher level. And it could be to the director, you, Chris, I'll send it to you first. This all seems really wonderful fun, just, I'll just name, it seems like a wonderful opportunity. And I, and one way, maybe I'm just looking, I'll start now, just with a reminder of what was the previous forgiveness allowance? In the previous, you know, as the program was prior design.
Yeah, so currently in 2015, there was a rulemaking that actually incorporated the, the limits on principal forgiveness. Currently, we can offer 50% of a loan amount or up to $500,000, whichever is less per loan. So if a loan is a million dollars, we could offer $500,000, that would be half. As well as up to $500,000. If a loan was $2 million, the maximum we could offer on that loan for principal forgiveness would be $500,000, that's the max. So in order for us to meet the overall requirement of more principal forgiveness. We have to be able to provide more on a per loan basis to meet the, the overall program requirement. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So, yes, lots of program coordination, stakeholder engagement, including our advisory committee. Our advise, our rule, rulemaking advisory committee will continue as a standing advisory committee beyond the rulemaking. In part because we want to continue their engagement, we want their input, their guidance on how to incorporate these changes into the program beyond the rulemaking. So our plan is to continue our engagement with them for an 18 month period, which will extend beyond the rulemaking. So lots of stakeholder engagement, we just submitted a, a joint report to the governor's office. About our efforts with the B I L along with the drinking water program, we did a joint response on that. There's growing interest in this, there's going to be transparency. The I U P has public comment periods for three times a year. The rulemaking will have our public comment period, we'll welcome public comments throughout the process. So those are all priorities, we're working on bill related and rulemaking related. Next slide. Getting close to wrap up here, in terms of the bill implementation and key milestones, I've been talking about the different cap grants. So here's, and these are priorities, this is how we get our federal funding. We, we applied for our base cap grant, Federal Fiscal Year 2022, June 30th, that's being reviewed. We're expecting a quick turnaround on this to continue working on the funding that we've been getting and funding projects. We have plenty of money to, to provide for financing. So we're going to continue working on what we've been receiving. And we have a loan application review cycle coming up, deadline of August 12th. And then again in December, and then again next April. And I mentioned how we update our intended use plan based on those application review cycles. So we're anticipating two updates to the intended use plan, November and April, in conjunction with those application review cycles. We're anticipating to contract for technical assistance by January of next year. We'd hope to earlier, we have to work through our procurement processes. So that's, that's a target of early next year to be able to contract and begin providing that technical assistance. And as mentioned, we intend to apply for the bill supplemental cap grant between January and March. And again, the rulemaking is related to this, we want to be in a position with adopting rule changes in January. So that we can look to apply for that funding, receive it and implement it by April of 2023. Next slide. And that's a wrap on the presentation today, appreciate your time and interest and engagement. And if there are any questions, I welcome that and time considering, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair George and Chris, I, I just joined, just missed the very first part of your presentation. But I just had a couple of questions and I'll try to be quick. Is the rulemaking on this to implement or to fold in the, the bipartisan infrastructure stuff? Is that what the rulemaking is focused on, is adding that component into the Clean Water Revolving Fund?
There, there are certain aspects of the bill that relate to our rulemaking. Specifically, the, the key requirement that triggered the rulemaking. Was the requirement for principal forgiveness, to increase the amount of principal forgiveness for the program. And if we look at our rule language, there's detail about how we award principal forgiveness. And, and I just conveyed those limits. And what we need to do is remove those limits and allow for more flexibility. Which we're determining what we can provide and, and additional limits. That will allow us to provide more principal forgiveness on a per loan basis to meet that requirement. That's the primary priority. And along with that, there are other priorities encouraged by EPA like revisiting our affordability criteria. Which there's a lot of detail in rule that we think we could include in our I U P. Our ranking and scoring, there's a lot of detail in rule that we think we could include in our I U P. The language about our I U P. And then the environmental justice considerations, which may not relate specifically to changing rule. But impact our program, relate to, you know, how we look at projects, possibly our affordability criteria. And so it's kind of a multifaceted effort here. With the focus of the rulemaking being on principal forgiveness, removing detail. And then other program considerations. And that's partly why we want to have the, the committee continue advising us beyond the rulemaking for those program considerations. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and Chair George, just quickly if I could. Are irrigation districts eligible for these funds?
Yes, they are, irrigation districts are eligible and we fund quite a number of irrigation districts for water conservation, water quality. Benefit projects, a lot in Eastern Oregon, Central Oregon.
Did you have any, sorry, did you have any? I, I'd heard your list, but do you have any irrigation district representatives on the advisory committee?
We have a representative from the Oregon Water Resources Congress who.
Thank you, perfect.
April Snow.
Great.
Thank you, thank you for the question, Commissioner.
Vice Chair Barasso.
This, this all sounds, I just, I'm sorry, again, this all sounds really great, it just, it's great to see. I mean, there's a part of me that just wonders at the scale, like whether, you know, whether you, whether the program, whether the federal government needed to move it through. This, whether they could do it in other ways, but I'm not going to go there now and maybe just why they, because this sounds like a great, a great benefit for the state. How does this interact with? Does this in any way impact or affect the way we could do some of the septic tank replacement programming? That we've, we've recently been bringing, you know, been, been improving, updating based on work, you know, have been based on funding coming in from the state itself. So does this in any way impact that program?
It, it may have some impact in terms of targeting funds for, you know, lower income. I know that, you know, the, the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we're implementing actually are targeting lower income communities and residents. So there's, there's a connection there with the priority overall. One thing to keep in mind with the bill funding is that it's not changing, fundamentally changing the program eligibility. So septic tank repair and replacement or connection to sewer isn't eligible activity under the Clean Water Act. So that won't change. You know, as we develop criteria, consider criteria that may be able to, you know, elevate. Communities that are more disadvantaged, that are underserved. It, it may allow us to direct more funding toward them, but we already recognize there's a need there. And to the degree that, you know, we can provide more assistance, all the better. And for principal forgiveness, there may be, you know, a bit more availability of principal forgiveness for.
I think, Chris, I'll just say, I don't, I, I think I'm, I probably have more detailed questions that are not, that are probably not, this place, I'll, I'll follow up with those, but I appreciate this, thank you.
Great, we encourage anybody with additional questions to, to go ahead and follow up with our staff, they're very generous and make themselves available to us. Thank you both, Jennifer and Chris, for some great news and some really exciting opportunities coming up. At this time, we need to move forward to the agency budget request informational item, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
You want me to go ahead and take it away here?
I will give you a very quick introduction, Chair George, Commissioners, for the record, Richard, Richard and D E Q Director. We have, in the next agenda item, agenda item P, we have lots of letters in this meeting. So we're up to P and this is really an overview of the very close to final agency request budget. That we are submitting to the governor's office. And Nancy Bennett, our miniature of policy and external relations is going to give an overview of that. Along with her team of people in our office of policy analysis. So Nancy, go ahead and take it away.
Okay, great, well, good morning, Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso and members of the commission. I am Nancy Bennett, Policy and External Affairs Manager. And I am here today with Ryan Hoof and Abby Beduris on my team to talk about our 2023-25 agency request budget. So today, we're going to cover some key budget milestones and a few process steps. We're going to talk about the budget priorities for each of our divisions and a little bit about next steps. So it's informational today, feel free to stop us with any questions or comments. We also have some more detailed materials that are posted on the web for anyone who wants to dive into this more deeply. So let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, so key budget milestones. Just want to kind of reorient us because it's been a while since we've done this, right? It's been two years, so this is an unusual year. We have a very consequential governor's election with three very different candidates with very different philosophies, I think, about the role of state agencies. The role of environmental protection. So I think on one level, you know, there's a lot of unknowns going forward. But at the same time, I want to emphasize that it really doesn't change our process. D E Q will submit our agency request budget to the current governor on September 1. It's our understanding that DAS and the governor's staff will be assessing agency budgets and providing their recommendations about what to fund. So I'm kind of calling that sort of transition budget, but they'll be providing those recommendations to the next governor. New governor will be elected November 8th and then they'll be getting to work on their governor recommended budget. Which doesn't really have to be released until the start of the 2023 session, we may see it sooner than that, but that's, that's how that could work. And then, you know, the legislature, of course, they really drive a lot of the budget process themselves. And typically the co-chairs of Ways and Means will develop their own budget and priorities and we usually see that around mid-session. And then, of course, they will adopt the state budget by June 30th and then we will be in budget execution mode. You know, I think a big driving force for everything you're going to hear about today will be sort of who holds key leadership positions in the House and Senate? Who's the governor? What's the state of our economy, you know, when we really get down to working on the budget? What do state revenues look like? And I think, you know, what we're sort of hearing, and I know Richard has been in some recent meetings and he may want to add more to this later. But, you know, that essentially revenues are, have remained steady, you know, that there's sort of the cautions on the horizon. But we're not in a sky is falling mode in terms of the budget. So I think, you know, as you're hearing us today, you know, we are putting forward the, the things we think we need as an agency. Whether those become priorities for the next governor, you know, sort of remains to be seen. But that's what you're going to be hearing about in a moment. So let's go to the next slide. So how we build the budget, and I just wanted to spend a few minutes talking about this. Because as I said, you know, it's been a while since we've been through this process. You know, we start with our current service level, but if we want to add anything to our budget or make changes. We need what is called a policy option package, and so you're going to be hearing about these packages in a moment. And the policy option package can include a substantial request, but it could also be housekeeping or other technical changes. And in some cases, we also have companion bills associated with POPs. And the bill development process is led by the governor's office and they actually determine which agency bills move forward. So we do have some bills that we'll be talking about along with our policy option packages. You know, in terms of timing, the budget process really starts right after the end of the long session. So we have started thinking about our budget needs a year ago. And there's a lot of conversation internally about sort of what are those needs, where are there gaps? We have a lot of consultation. You know, we hopefully are having some early stakeholder conversations, we're talking to our leadership team. I think we had brought some ideas to you earlier this year, we're talking to the governor's office. So there's, there's a lot of vetting that goes on in terms of, of developing kind of what becomes the, the packages that we produce. Then we're crafting the policy option packages, also part of our budget book, we have to identify reduction options. Those may or may not be taken, but those are always, you know, sort of challenging conversations to have about what resources we're willing to give up. We also have to complete, you know, fairly extensive I T and staffing plans. And then we get to the point where the, the chair, E Q C Chair certifies our budget, we'll be bringing this to you next month. I don't think we've set that meeting yet, but I know we're planning that. And then finally, you know, we'll be submitting this budget book to the governor. So let's go to the next slide, please. And again, stop me if there's anything you want more information on. So stakeholder engagement is really a critical part of this process. And we have held a number of stakeholder meetings over the past six months in particular, as we've sort of had more concrete proposals to share. We've had some broader meetings with a lot of different interests represented. We've also been meeting by sort of our media divisions where we've. We've had some broader meetings with a lot of different interests represented. We've also been meeting by sort of our media divisions, where we've had some roundtable meetings or some sector-specific meetings. We had an environmental justice focused meeting last month. And I want to say that there's always more to do. I think there's always ways for us to improve, so I don't want to pat us on the back and say we're, you know, covering it all. But I think it's, it is really important to us to have those conversations with stakeholders. And, you know, we want to continue that. And I wanted to share just like a little snippet of the kind of feedback we've been hearing, and and this is by no means exhaustive. And I also, you know, feel free, my colleagues who've been in a lot of these meetings may want to to chime in with some of their own feedback, but I think kind of core things we hear, one is to really bolster our core programs. I think that our stakeholders want us to do sort of carry out our core mission and make sure that we're funded and adequately funded to do those things. So that is always a big priority that we hear about. We've been hearing about a lot more invest in groundwater resources, and and I think Ryan will be talking more about that. That is definitely a bigger theme this this time around. We've heard a lot about staying climate focused. A lot of our stakeholders are really worried about kind of future state in terms of impacts with wildfire and and water quality and all of these things. So they they like what we're doing on climate, and they want us to stay focused on that. We've heard some positive feedback about some of the early engagement and transparency that we've had. And so, you know, we want to continue that. And of course, we also hear often, you know, to keep an eye on fees and on burdens on business. So those are some key things. I'm just maybe pause for a moment to see if there's any comments and then see if my colleagues want to add anything. They may want to in their own presentations. Okay, I'm not hearing anything. I'll move on.
Nancy, Director Whitman.
Yeah, just very briefly, just supplement a tiny bit what Nancy just presented. She did a great job. This, the the agency request budget is, as Nancy said, a document that lays out everything that DEQ believes is needed for effective operation of the programs that we have. And so it's a long list. We did not hold back. We approached this from the philosophy of we want whomever the next governor of Oregon is and the Oregon Legislature to know what what the gaps are, where the needs are. And so it's it's a fairly relative to other agency request budgets, we did not hold back at all. So I just wanted to say that. Number two, one other area of focus is in in addition to the core program, core environmental permitting regulatory work that we do and continued reinvestment in those areas is in what I would call agency infrastructure. So this is you know, everything from human resources to procurement to capacity, and I mentioned this one specifically, capacity to compete for and administer competitive grant funds, particularly federal competitive grant funds, of which there's a fair amount right now. And we are having the experience of really struggling, not having the capacity that we need to even put together, you know, good applications for some of these competitive grants, because it's not an area that we've invested in at all. And so we are proposing that, we're also proposing some investment in legal resources, because, you know, we continue to have a fairly high cost level in terms of litigation in particular. So tho- those are just some ongoing infrastructure needs that and then actually one more, sorry. We're also having quite a bit of conversation internally about stress on our managers and manager to staff ratios, which are high and particularly high in some areas of the agency. So we're paying a lot of attention to that. And Leah has done a good job of, as has Brian, on insisting that we also put requests on the table to address some of those things long term in terms of investments in the agency. So I think with that, the, let's go ahead and turn it back to the team to get into a few more specifics, but I'm gonna give you a little more.
Thank you.
Great. Let's go to the next slide, and that's actually a nice lead-in director. So now we are kind of switching gears. We're going to talk a little bit about the priorities. And so first, I'm going to cover some of the air quality areas, and these are sort of four categories. We have some multiple POPs within each of them. So first up is really helping communities prepare for wildfire and minimizing health risks. And as you might recall, in 2021, the legislature passed Senate Bill 762. This was a sort of a big wildfire bill for the state, but one piece of it was requiring DEQ to establish a grant program to support local communities in developing wildfire smoke response plans. So the legislation authorized seven limited duration positions for us, which were a mix of program and our lab. And we've been working with communities. Earlier this year, we awarded $1.3 million in grant funding to about 20 organizations and county and tribal governments across the state to work on projects related to smoke management and alternatives to open burning. So, you know, it'll be really, I think we'll be evaluating this, but we want to come back to the legislature and ask for additional resources here. We'd like these positions to be permanent. We think this is a really important part of our air quality program and increasing need. Wildfire is definitely not going away. And we think we have an important role to play with communities, and it's a really community-driven process. I I want to say each community is a little bit different, and I think having this funding to help them figure out what's the best way to handle it is really helpful. So that's one of our policy option packages. Second.
Nancy, Director Whitman.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm gonna try to minimize any interruptions here, but but on this point, there is a high-level ongoing task force on wildfire run by Doug Graff and and that I serve on with a number of other agency directors. I want to make the point, we are going to be working actively actively to increase the pace and scale of prescribed burning on forest lands across the state as a way of restoring health and frankly managing smoke and the impacts of smoke. And that is going to mean that there's going to be a higher need for this pre-work with communities to get them ready for that that increase. It's been a while since we've had a conversation with forestry about some of this, but that I'm, I think is going to be a theme of the upcoming long legislative session is how to how to invest in some of that work with the federal government as well. And so this, that's why you see this right at the top of the list in terms of one of the priorities. And in the director's report, I'll talk about a report that was just issued by our lab about wildfire smoke trends in Oregon and a little bit about the public health consequences of that. It's a major concern.
If there's room for commissioners on this kind of task force or anything like that, I'd really enjoy being part of those conversations. I think you.
Okay, I'll continue. And actually, I was going to mention, you know, to the director's earlier point about grant programs and kind of our capacity. It's also, you know, DEQ is playing an increasing role in administering grants to others and so to sub-grantee. So that's another area that we are rapidly trying to build our expertise and capacity so that we can get dollars out the door quickly, because that's, you know, the legislature will give us money, and then it's like, how quickly can we get the dollars into the hands of those who can put it to good use? So so that's a another area for us. But kind of continuing on, we, you heard yesterday about transportation. That's a really important part of our greenhouse gas emissions strategies. And, you know, I guess what I would say about this particular piece, you, you know, we have a lot of programs, as you heard about yesterday. And what's been kind of missing for us, I think, has been having that overall manager and somebody who can really sort of drive a bigger strategic focus. And also, I think for DEQ to engage with our sister agencies in more of a leadership role. And we heard a lot from stakeholders that that's something that they would really like to see happen. So we have a package that adds a transportation manager and then also continues some work on our medium and heavy duty vehicle charging pilot. We got some limited resources in the short session, and we want to continue some of that. The next package I'll talk about is permitting. You, we always bring forth something on permitting, of course, and we have two policy option packages on this. The first one is really aimed at our air contaminant discharge program. We've spent a lot of time over the past four to five years working to fix the permit backlog, and I think we've been making meaningful progress in that area. But at the same time, you've been hearing our air quality administrator talk about the need to make permits more comprehensive and more protective. And you'll be hearing a lot more about this, I think, at a future briefing, probably at the next commission meeting. But we've been working closely with with Ali Merzakalili about this and really wanting to seek some additional resources, some general fund resources, actually, to add some permitting staff in our regions and headquarters and add some modeling capacity so that we can, again, make our permits, you know, more comprehensive and and more accurate. So that is that policy option package. A second POP is related to our Title V permitting program. This is a program that addresses our largest and most complex sources of pollution, and we permit approximately 100 Title V sources in Oregon. We have not adjusted our fees in Title V for over 13 years, and despite federal regulations becoming more complex to administer. So we will be seeking a fee increase next session, and we do have a piece of legislation to authorize us to do that. So that'll be part of our sort of legislative program. And we're really at a point with this program where we have to raise fees or we face a fairly significant revenue shortfall. That's partly due to the closure of the PG Boardman Coal Plant, which is a good thing, but it also means less revenue for that program. So this package that we have would address the fee increase and the restoration of positions that we would lose if we don't get that fee increase. So we'll be having a lot of conversations with our stakeholders and with legislators next session about our Title V program. And then finally, I'm going to talk a little bit about our climate protection program. So we have two packages here. You've again been hearing a lot, I think, lately from our climate staff. And we have a fairly modest package, and it's really adding a couple of positions to our climate protection program to just sort of fill in some gaps as we mature that program and and really go full implementation. There's a couple of areas that we we need some additional support. We also are asking for another position in our clean fuels program. You've been hearing about sort of our plans around clean fuels, so just shoring up those two programs. The second package is a little bit more complicated, and that's related to our community climate investment piece of the climate protection program. And this is where we have both a piece of legislation and a budget package. So we're requesting a number of positions that are related to our oversight role of the community climate investment program, which is really significant. You know, this program will be approving and contracting with third-party entities, will be supporting an equity advisory committee, will be supporting the development of work plans, and we really, you know, ensuring that we're meeting our targets. And I think we want to just sort of from day one have a really robust oversight and transparency with this program, because we know there's going to be a lot of interest in it. So we don't actually have revenue to support that. So we're going to be seeking authority to charge a fee to the CCI entities to sort of support that oversight work, and then we do have these positions. And this is really similar to how we fund the oversight work in our recycling program. We have with these producer responsibility organizations, they actually pay DEQ a fee to do our oversight role. So we're contemplating a similar sort of arrangement for this to help fund this oversight responsibility. And so I'm going to stop there on air quality. And before we move on to the next, are there any questions or any further comments from anybody on air quality before we move on to water?
Not seeing any.
Okay, great. Um, let's get to the next slide and bring up Ryan.
Great, thanks, Nancy. Good morning, Chair George, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ryan Hoof, Water Quality Policy and Legislative Analyst. Our water quality programs are preparing 11 policy option packages or POPs that I describe as substantive in nature. Most of these are represented by the five themes that are identified on this slide, and I'll be walking through. And they're really intended to propose, for the governor's consideration, a comprehensive range of needs across our our different water quality sub-program areas. Combined, if all of these proposals were approved by the legislature, these packages would establish, or in some cases, restore about 35 positions for for the division, requiring general fund appropriations, or in some cases, fee increases to support the enhancements. The first theme involves a set of three POPs that aim to improve staffing capacity for our wastewater, stormwater, and onsite permitting programs. We're planning to request multiple positions in this area that would improve program capacity for permit development, permit issuance, compliance assurance, with a focus on our WPCF or groundwater protection permitting activities. But it would also include improved technical expertise and capacity related to things like water reuse, bio solids, and data management activities as well. And we'll see the onsite package in particular would address needs in rural and low-income communities that tend to be underserved by municipal investments and are disproportionately impacted when septic systems fail. Combined, these enhancements to our permitting work would represent really a second installment of investments that were initiated in 2019 and continue to be an area of need to ensure that our water quality permits are being administered effectively and in a manner that meets federal and state requirements to protect public health and the environment. Second on this list, which is not, we'll say the list is not prioritized in any specific or meaningful manner. We have a policy option package that would improve watershed restoration and non-point source pollution control efforts across the state by enhancing our TMVL's programs' capacity to provide coordination support and technical assistance for designated management agencies that specifically have TMDL implementation responsibilities without sufficient sufficient capacity in this area to support ongoing engagement with those responsible entities for reducing pollutant loading strategies. We're really unlikely to be able to implement in a timely or successful manner some of those plans, those restoration activities. These proposals include providing specific, basin-specific technical and funding assistance, and we feel are really critical to restoring impaired watersheds and protecting public interest. Next, we have identified a need for increased staffing to meet requirements associated with some critical work for our water quality standards and assessment section. And this includes maintaining an on-time reporting system related to our 303D listing of impaired waters. Also includes improving analytical and data visualization abilities for increased transparency and accessibility of our assessment results. And also to provide technical expertise that's been lacking in this program, specifically around marine water quality data analysis, which would include support for ocean acidification and hypoxia assessment needs in our coastal waters. One of the outcomes from this particular proposal would be for DEQ's assessment team to develop a one-step, easy-to-use, what we're referring to as a water quality data atlas, which would enhance existing reporting to include some supporting information such as severity of impairments, trends around impairments, and results from other water quality program assessments, just to provide a more comprehensive one-stop assessment tool.
Before you leave that topic, I just wanted to to let you dive just a little bit deeper into that. How would this differ from the kinds of tools we see in the, you know, the integrated report or the kind of roll-up information that Jennifer briefly provided yesterday? If you could just share a little bit more about what you think that this would add to the tools available?
Yeah, no, thank you for the question, Chair George. Indeed, there have been some significant improvements made to the integrated report in terms of how that information is shared, the story maps, the online database, et cetera. What we're talking about here specifically is really to address a variety of, we'll say complaints, but suggestions that we've received from stakeholders and the public who try to access this data in that, you know, when they view that data and it says there's an impairment, currently, there's not a whole lot of context and additional supporting information to go along with that. And so what we're really looking at providing is an ability to to drill down a little bit deeper into the data to look at those trends over time, to look at just how bad of of an impairment it may be or may not be, if it's just over the threshold or or not. And there are other results independent from the the 303D listing and the integrated report assessment results that also are of great interest to that also are of great interest to people, and so for being able to to link that in and provide an ability for for people to be able to access applicable information for a specific watershed area or around a particular type of or subset of pollutants is really what we're we're looking to be able to provide with these with these resource requests.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks Chair Barasso.
Ryan, we're talking about the TMDL, additional TMDL implementation coordination resources. What, how is that, is there an element of that that's being also paired with similar requests from our partner agencies? I mean, this is the long conversation we've been in, and I'm just trying to understand how that, I see how that plays in with DEQ, but I know that there's there's equal and similar need for those, I suspect there's equal and similar need for those investments at our at ODF and or Department of.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso. Indeed, we are aware that our sister agencies are looking at their responsibilities on this quite closely as well. I do want to distinguish that when we talk about the technical resources or the resources we're requesting to provide support to designated management agencies. Those DMAs include a wide variety of of potential entities, certainly sister agencies are one of them, such as ODF or ODA. But there's a lot of other local agencies, other types of landowners, federal agencies, who also are included in that that group. So to your question specifically, yes, certainly ODF, as a result of the ongoing development of changes and revisions to the Forest Practices Act. Are, we're aware they're looking at resource requests that certainly would contribute to this area of work. And similarly, ODA and their Agriculture and Water Quality Program, also, we've been in discussions with them about the relationship and how both we can provide them with support that they'd have the support that they need to do this work. So ongoing discussions and definitely something that's on our radar, so thanks for asking that question.
Just follow up, so. So follow up is, are they making that request in new investments in capacity for TMDL implementation?
I need to look specifically at, I haven't actually reviewed theirs yet since they haven't released them. We've had some preliminary discussions, I would say, at the Water Corps team just about sharing information between agencies, but we haven't actually seen the comprehensive list yet. So I'd be happy to follow up with you once we have definitive information about the the scope of their ARB requests.
Thank you, Ryan. Chair George, if it's okay, I'll just weigh in a little bit here. Normally, that sort of conversation would occur at Natural Resources Cabinet, and it has not occurred yet. But I expect it will occur in the near future, so. Stay tuned, we'll have more information shortly.
Great, well, I think Sam's quite right, I think it's something that we've inquired about every year, and you know that DEQ can't do it all on their own, so. We we will hope to hear good things that they are wanting to invest in this work as well.
Great, thanks. So moving on this list, the fourth bullet encompasses multiple proposed efforts that are focused on protecting sources of drinking water with specific attention around areas that we know are experiencing contamination or threats to the drinking water supplies. The requested resources are focused on groundwater protection activities specifically, but also include a request for a dedicated staff position related to harmful algal blooms and looking at impaired water bodies and developing watershed-specific pollution reduction management plans for those areas to reduce the occurrence of HAVs that are caused by these toxin-producing cyanobacteria. With regards to the groundwater resources specifically, we're really looking to aim to to improve staffing capacity specifically in our eastern region to help support coordination and implementation efforts in the Lower Yamato Basin groundwater management area. This would include restoring a groundwater coordinator position that had been cut in previous biennia. Also looking to establish a soil scientist, technical expert to support our DEQ permitting responsibilities in that area. And we also have a request for one-time appropriation of contract services funding to support development and refinement of a hydrogeologic model specific to the Yamato Basin. In addition to the staffing and contract services enhancements focused in the eastern region, the agency is also proposing two legislative concepts that have companion policy option packages in our ARB and are related to statewide groundwater quality assessment and management. The first proposal would revise the domestic well or real estate testing requirements with the goal of increasing the amount of information that's reported to the state and available for identifying areas in the state where more robust groundwater monitoring may be necessary. The second concept would fund a third-party evaluation of the statewide groundwater quality act and then support a stakeholder task force to develop program improvement recommendations either for executive branch and or legislative branch consideration. The last theme identified on this list would improve DEQ's capacity to support regional and place-based planning and other initiatives that are underway and to promote the integrated water resource strategy and protect against water quality impacts resulting from emerging climate threats. Multi-agency and stakeholder engagement is a critical component to local and regional water planning activities. And to prepare for water scarcity and other climate change impacts on water quality, DEQ really recognizes a need to have this sufficient staffing capacity to collaborate with our partner agencies and to contribute technical assistance and necessary, I should say, to these necessary but but really complex planning efforts.
Just one moment, please. Okay, sorry to interrupt, please finish your thought, Ryan, and then Vice Chair Barasso may have something for us.
Sure, sure, just one last point about this last theme area, and that is that also included in this package, we are planning to request a position dedicated to natural or green infrastructure project development. The objective really would be to enhance coordination and cooperation across subprogram areas at DEQ and with external stakeholders to identify and develop strategies that will support and facilitate the regulatory frameworks, the technical assistance, and the funding programs that are necessary for natural infrastructure projects that both meet water quality standards while also providing other co-benefits, including habitat and ecosystem services improvements. So that does conclude the the overview of the Water Quality Program, specific themes related to our ARB, so I'd be happy to take any questions before we hand it over to Land Quality.
Okay, are you ready now?
I am, thank you. In part, it's because I didn't, I want to go back to source water protection. And I maybe I'll just state an assumption because I appreciate hearing about the harmful algal bloom position that'll be added to help coordinate that work, but given sort of the the, you know, given how much we've engaged in that and the complexity of that work, and what I kind of heard being spelled out on this individual to coordinate that work and develop watershed specific plans. One, is this a position that would then work with our, you know, our other our standards and assessments body or other bodies, because it seems like it's otherwise a small down payment on what needs to be a substantially larger group to be addressing harmful algal blooms. So I was just trying to contextualize that one position on what is otherwise a very big thing.
Yeah, great, thank you for that question, Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso. Indeed, DEQ has received some enhancements to our resources related to HAVs work in the last few years. Those have been related or specifically to to monitoring and testing capacity out at our lab, and so really that's helping support the testing that needs to happen for drinking water suppliers, and it's giving us a little bit better perspective on where harmful algal blooms are happening around the state, to be able to get those results out sooner than we otherwise would have been able to do so. So data's coming in, and really what we're looking to do with this position is to work closely within the Clean Water Act authorities that we have related to TMDLs and responsibilities for developing watershed specific plans where there are impairments. And so this position would provide that group, the TMDL and Watershed Assessment Team, with a dedicated staff position to help pull together that data, to look at contributing factors, and to look at potential strategies within those watersheds and what might be successful at reducing the occurrence or the severity of harmful algal blooms.
Thank you for contextualizing that.
Chair Whitton.
Yeah, real quickly, I want to say just a little bit more about the policy option packages and legislative concepts related to groundwater quality that Ryan did a good job of giving an overview of. We heard a little bit earlier this morning from Marian Cooper about a desire to work in partnership with Oregon DEQ on groundwater quality issues, and I I was very pleased to hear those remarks, and we do, we need the partnership with agriculture to make progress in this area. I also want to say just more generally, the Oregon Health Authority has responsibility for protecting public drinking water systems, and so, you know, I think, and they do a good job of that, and our our public drinking water systems, including those that rely on groundwater, which is a large number of them, are generally quite safe and, you know, are regularly tested and reported on. But what work in the last few years has really shown a light on is that there's a gap in our system for on private drinking water wells. And this is an environmental justice issue. The households that are reliant on private wells tend to be rural, they tend to be, you know, households, many of which aren't, do not have higher incomes, and we also have language issues for some of those households, there's farm worker housing that's also reliant on these wells, so. In our capacity for, in our systems for getting data on groundwater quality for those types of wells is spotty at best. So we're we're somewhat blind to the nature of the problem, and then in areas where we have identified issues, it's really, it's a good example of needing to take a place-based approach to the solutions because the problems are different in each area, and you know, there's currently a lot of attention focused on the Lower Yamato, but it's not the only area in the state where we have groundwater quality issues, and each of them leads local partners working together with state and and other partners to understand the nature of the problem, to get people information so they can be informed, and also to start to work on solutions, so. The Groundwater Management Act was put in place now 30, roughly 30 years ago, and it has worked in some parts of the state, in the Ontario area in particular, we've seen a successful local, locally-led efforts that have reduced contaminant levels in private wells. It hasn't worked as well in other areas of the state, and we think it is time both to invest in this, in this work and to look at what changes may be needed in the program in order to make it more effective. I I want to really emphasize though, as we, as we all become more cognizant of environmental justice issues around public health, this is an area of significant concern, and that's why you're seeing DEQ and the Health Authority and others, local government also pay, starting to pay much more attention to this. Oregon is not alone in this, Washington has similar and frankly more difficult issues in parts of that state, and these issues are fairly pervasive, actually, when you get into the Midwest and and middle parts of the country. So it's a, it's a, this is, you know, EPA is also struggling nationally with with how to address these issues, so. I I do think this will be a big issue for DEQ in the coming years, and the Health Authority and local government and our partners in agriculture, and we're going to need to pay more attention to it, and we're going to, the solutions are going to, where we have problems, because it's going to be work at the local level figuring out how to bring people together.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for land quality.
Great, well, good, I think it's still morning, good morning Chair George and members of the Commission. Abby Bedurs, Legislative Analyst for the Land Quality Division. It's good to see you all again and provide an update on the policy option packages for land quality. In developing the the agency request budget for the division, we centered upon really strengthening resilience and response to emergencies, continuing progress to achieving the 2050 vision for materials management and keeping programs up to date and resourced, resourced, including both funding and staffing. The policy option packages are a little pared down from what I presented back in March, and it reflects really deep dives into the current and future needs of the land quality program. And as a reminder, land quality programs include emergency response, hazardous waste, environmental cleanup, fuel tanks, and materials management. The budget for Land Quality Division relies predominantly on fees, fees and cost recovery revenue sources with very prescriptive statutory requirements with and very little from general fund. Starting with emergency response, that program responds to spills of oil and hazardous materials statewide. We receive over 1,500 incident notifications from the Oregon Emergency Response System each year. Some of these are routine, small spills, and some are major incidents that require on significant onsite response that can last for days, weeks, or months. The program also has statewide emergency response preparedness responsibilities. In the past, the agency received general funds to support the program, but that funded was actually eliminated back in the late 1990s. And current funding relies on recovering costs from responsible parties. We have an impressive small team of staff, but it is under-resourced and we quickly exhaust our bench when responding to sustained events or multiple simultaneously occurring events. In this package, we're seeking to augment our regional spills response capacity. It will increase our ability to respond to the spills during the incident, as well as follow up on how those spills were addressed after the emergency phase to ensure and confirm that the cleanup was completed to regulatory requirements. Failure to identify early on when there's incomplete actions can really lead to future cleanups that are much more expensive. This POP seeks general funds to support one additional field staff in each of our three regions. It'll help us fill the gaps in the emergency response role for small and large operations when oil and hazardous materials spill. And that allows to inspect and verify that cleanup is adequately done, and contractors are performing their work. They'll also expand our capacity to respond in an extended response. We have sought similar requests over the past several biennia, and I have not yet been successful despite the need. And perhaps to state the obvious, the best bill is one that never happens, but the next best one is one that we're prepared for and adequately resourced to respond to. So moving on, over the past several years, the Materials Management Program has engaged with the Commission both on our recycling modernization work as well as the 2050 vision, and yesterday you heard from staff about the Built Environment Program in that program. The Materials Management Program is seeking two POPs, one for positions to implement the recycling bill, the Recycling Modernization Act that passed last year, Senate Bill 582. These positions were anticipated when the bill was considered, but we knew we didn't need them till the second biennium. And they are paid for by fees, by producers, excuse me, of printed paper and packaging. And in addition, the program has identified several positions that are needed to implement existing materials management programs that are currently under-resourced to achieve the program outcomes, and these are both in our headquarters and our regional offices. These would be funded with existing fee other fund revenue. So both these POPs are seeking authority and limitation for positions using revenue, existing revenue. Next is a fairly routine POP to replenish the state's industrial orphan site account. It would allow us to issue bonds and pay the debt service to fund ongoing investigation and cleanup of contaminated sites where uncontrolled hazardous substances releases pose risk to human health and the environment, and where no other source of funding is available to address that risk. and where no other source of funding is available to address that risk. These orphan, industrial orphans include a range of sites from small service stations to large former industrial operations, abandoned mines, or area-wide areas where groundwater has been contaminated. These bond sales would allow us to, to continue work on twenty to twenty-five existing sites and add a few new ones. We do ask for these bond and general fund to pay for it every two to four years, so a routine ask. And then finally, a program that's reduced, come to its end of its useful life. This is the Dry Cleaner Program in Oregon. It was created by the State Legislature in nineteen ninety-five to create a cleanup fund paid for by the dry cleaning industry and to, and otherwise exempt the cleaners, owners, and operators from cleanup liability and to ensure the cleanup of contamination resulting from these dry cleaning industries. At the time, the industry was about five hundred dry cleaners in the state, and we expected to have a million dollars of annual revenue to do, and that would do the job. The dry cleaning industry has declined over time, and the fee revenue has declined along with it. There's fewer active dry cleaners down to a hundred and fifty a year ago and, and declining about ten percent a year. The dry cleaning program has done a good bit of work to clean up sites, but it's no longer financially viable. The fees don't cover the administrative costs and don't provide revenue for future cleanup. And stakeholders have not supported increases of fees to generate enough to continue the program. So this POP will go along with a legislative concept that would do three things. First, it would sunset the dry cleaner program. Second, it would prohibit the use of perchlorethylene and n propyl bromine in the dry cleaner operations. Perchlorethylene is really the main reason why the contaminated sites have been an issue. And then finally, it would create a reimbursement fund to help fund the predominantly small businesses that operate in the dry cleaning industry to help them switch from perchlorethylene to less toxic or water-based cleaning systems. So I'm going to end there. I'm happy to answer questions, but I'll pass it back to Nancy.
Looks like not seeing any questions. Okay, well, we're going to wrap it up here in just a moment. So a couple of things in our central services and sort of some cross-program budget priorities. One is around environmental justice. You've heard a lot about our environmental justice, I think, over the past, work over the past year. And, you know, we're, in addition to some work that we're doing around a bill that passed last session, House Bill forty seventy-seven, we're also really working to create a more permanent structure within DEQ to support policy evaluation, to support the engagement work and really coordination across the agency. A lot of this work is already happening, but we don't have it kind of organized in a way that can really be felt, I think, as deeply as we want it to be. So we are requesting one permanent coordinator position to really help facilitate this work within our agency. Second, we will be asking for some resources. We call it support staffing. So typically, in every session, we receive new programmatic positions, but we don't always get the sort of support functions that go along with that, like additional HR or IT payroll and things like that. So we'll be sort of evaluating, you know, how many positions we might be getting and sort of what is that level of support functions that we need. And we'll be talking to the legislature about that, but we have a bit of a placeholder POP for that. Want to touch on updating equipment and staffing structure for our DEQ lab. We, in the short session, we received some one-time funds to upgrade some lab equipment, which was really great. And I think there was a lot of interest in our legislative subcommittee on this issue. This is a really a constant challenge though for us. There is sort of many of our critical instruments are really beyond sort of that, you know, repair, opportunity to repair and replacement of instruments is very, very expensive. So we are looking for some ongoing funding from the legislature so that we can kind of really maintain our lab equipment where it needs to be. And then we have a couple of positions as well to just, you know, continue to sort of support functions at the lab. And then finally, I want to mention, and the director sort of referenced this earlier, is adding some capacity to our Office of Compliance and Enforcement. And we really haven't added positions to this section for many, many years. And they have a tremendous workload. And so we don't have a separate POP for them. We've actually added a couple of positions in other places where we expect, where we have had historically a lot of compliance issues. So in our permitting and a couple of different places in our permitting and air quality and water quality is where we have those positions. But just, we feel like we, you know, it is, it is an important part of the work that we do. And, and the team that we have now is really challenged to keep up with the workload. So that is sort of, those are sort of the cross-program and sort of our central services priorities. And that's basically all we have to share today. If there are questions, happy to answer them. We'll have, as I mentioned, we have some resources on the website. And we'll be coming back to you next month with that certification request. And that's all I've got today.
Well, thank you very much, Nancy and team. Any last comments or questions?
Just, this is, this is, I appreciate seeing the scale of this. There's been obviously a lot of, I mean, it's, it's nice to see the agency continue to think about strengthening, strengthening the agency. And so I appreciate you all bringing your packages in this way.
Great.
Yeah, I, I will just extend my thanks to the team, Nancy, Ryan, Abby. Nice job on the presentation and everybody, all the people behind the scenes who worked really hard to put all this together. A really nice job.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Yes, actually, I, I do want to sort of acknowledge, we do have a team of budget analysts at the agency who are sort of like the unsung heroes behind the scenes. They never get out here, they never get to talk, but they are absolutely what helps us sort of pull everything together and do sort of those more challenging behind-the-scenes works. So I just really want to thank all of them very much. They work very hard, and this is an incredibly busy time for them. So very much appreciated the work they're doing.
Absolutely. Okay, have a wonderful Friday.
Thank you.
We are moving right along to our last informational item of the day, which is the Director's Report.
Thank you Chair George. For the record, Richard Whitman, DEQ Director. I'm gonna, as per usual, lead on this one. Leah Felden is gonna do a couple pieces of the Director's Report this time around on a couple of specific things also. I'm going to do my best to get you out of here on schedule around twelve thirty, I think. There may be other commitments to propose to have. And, and I also know we actually, we need to get out of this room because the room is committed also. Now that I think about it, so I really am going to try to move us through.
So we'll be leaving one way or another.
So let me start just a little bit with a few, a few things with regard to EPA. Casey Sixkiller is the new Region Ten EPA Administrator, and I've been meeting with him regularly. You're really going to like him. He's a great person. Deputy Mayor, former Deputy Mayor of City of Seattle for some time. So he's very experienced in running larger, complex organizations. He was down here the day before yesterday, and he and I spent about two and a half hours out on the water touring Portland Harbor and really talking in detail about next steps on Portland Harbor. And so it's been a while since we've talked with the Commission about that. But one of the things that Casey announced was that EPA is stepping forward and funding the remedial design work at the last of the sediment management areas where we did not have parties that had agreed to do the funding for that work. So I have the entire harbor covered essentially in terms of remedial design work. And that's very exciting. We're very appreciative of EPA's initiative and stepping forward on that site. It's Cathedral Park area, which is very important to the community. So kudos to EPA. Also, with regard to EPA moving to the water quality arena, we had a hearing in early June hosted by EPA on Oregon's objection to the water quality certification for, for lower Columbia US Army Corps of Engineers dams and the water quality impacts of those dams. And it was, I think, a good hearing. We submitted testimony following the hearing to EPA about what we want to see. Added to the conditions that the state Washington Department of Ecology has already placed on the federal permits for those dams. Essentially, without going into detail here, I don't, I'll just at a high level, we have asked and EPA has given some early indication that the receptive to additional conditions assuring that Oregon-specific standards that protect cold water refugia that protect a specific run of salmon that spawn just below Bonneville in Maine Stadium, where you have a more protective temperature standard for that particular run, particularly, and it spawns in October. So probably some conditions related to water temperature in that time of the year, which is an important time of the year. And then you also have a narrative standard around natural thermal patterns in the Columbia that we've asked for these specific conditions around. So I, the proposal is for Oregon to be our basically co-equal with Washington in reviewing and approving or not approving the Corps' plans for meeting the load allocations for those four dams. And this is kind of a big deal. And we don't have a final decision from EPA yet. We expect getting a, a decision in the near future. And we, we were encouraged by early response from EPA on this and hopeful that that will come to fruition here in the near future. So let's see, the next thing I, I want to do is actually.
Director, I just want to take a moment to, to thank you and the Department of Oregon for staying strong in that position. As you know, I have experience trying to work on what can be done. And indeed, there are things that can be done at dams to help mitigate these critical issues for fisheries. And so I want to, I want to give a strong support to Oregon, holding fast and raising those important issues and, and not allowing them to kind of be swept away. So I just couldn't leave that without expressing that this has been worked on for so many years by so many people. A sign, a little bit of good news is, is a good sign, and I hope that Oregon will hold fast in these positions because there truly are things that can be done.
Thank you Chair George. And some of those things involve potentially opportunities to work with Oregon federally recognized tribes along with Columbia as well, both Younta, Confederate Tribes, Younta, and also Confederate Tribes in Moore Springs. And so I'm looking forward to partnerships, working, working with people on particularly the cold water refugia piece. Okay, the next piece, I'm gonna actually turn it over to Deputy Director Felden to talk a little bit about EPA and PFAS. We've got emerging, some emerging news there that I'll ask her to talk about it. And then a little bit about strategic planning also if you could.
Go and do both.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the, yeah, on the PFAS front. Stepping back a little bit with, when the new administration came in at the federal level, there was, I, I think, a more organized and renewed commitment around PFAS. And they, they EPA put out a roadmap for what they intended to do. And a lot of this was at the state's, you know, request that, you know, all the states are trying to manage. There's not any sort of regulatory levels. The impact of PFAS are, are very different in different states. So, so EPA released its, its roadmap, which is pretty specific in detail in terms of what, you know, different actions they intend to take around rich media and life. One thing they have committed to doing is coming out with national drinking water levels for PFAS. PFAS and drinking water by fall of twenty twenty-two. However, in June, in the meantime, they also said, we, we already have new data on PFAS, and we feel essentially compelled to share that data and to issue some interim health advisory levels. Historically, EPA had held at, I believe it was seventy parts per trillion as a health advisory level. And Commissioner Cal knows, but as a reminder, health advisory levels are intended to be informative and bring awareness as to what levels you should start paying attention to something in, in water, but they are not regulatory. And so they're not, they're not levels at which you, at which states would regulate at, or EPA. So again, they were at, historically, at seventy parts per trillion. They had data to show that it should be much lower, so they issued some interim health advisory levels. Those levels are at point zero zero four parts per trillion and point zero two parts per trillion for PFAS respectively. So those came out in June, and this, you know, of course, you know, states are absorbing this.
It changes the landscape.
It really changes, it changes the landscape. And, and in Oregon, our health, our, excuse me, the, the Oregon Health Authority had issued health advisory level, you know, there are different types of PFAS, but generally speaking, for PFAS, around thirty parts per trillion. So we were lower than where EPA was at when that was issued. But now all of the states and all of their levels are higher than these interim levels. And these interim levels are really at levels that aren't detectable at, at the moment with current methodology. So what I want to, I want to put that out there, but also stress that these are interim levels. They are non-regulatory levels. And EPA has stressed that, again, they are still on their roadmap to issue drinking water at levels in fall of twenty twenty-two. So we're aware of these, we're, we're thinking about what they mean, but we're also really anticipating those levels coming out in the fall, which will be regulatory. And, and that's really where I think we need to stay focused at, at the moment. So that's, yes.
Hi, Mr. Barasso, and then Commissioner Cal.
Just to make sure I understand drinking water, that includes, you know, folks that are connected to systems, and that also includes ground, folks that are getting their sources from groundwater, well, you know, groundwater or just wells.
The, the regulatory levels would be for public drinking.
Public drinking water.
Systems.
Not private wells.
So not private wells, right.
Some of, some, some public water systems are, are from groundwater though.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that's right.
So. And it, and it, in some ways, it actually mirrors kind of the arsenic story where monitoring and networks had equipment that was set for higher levels. And so with the new regulatory standards and everything else, it, it is going to require updates in laboratory and equipment and things like that. So the question I have is kind of a cross-talk to the budget and the lab equipment. And is, is there a specific, because measuring PFAS is a really tricky, is a tricky one.
Well, and we.
And OHSU actually is, has one of the few labs in the country that actually does measure PFAS really well. So I was curious how the states are going to respond for monitoring. And then also what OHA has been doing with their surveys at the higher levels. So it has identified a few smaller, kind of more mobile home park-sized water, public water systems that are very close to the thirties. So they, they have them called in at that state level, but they're at a level that will need to be addressed. So how does that also cross-talk to the Clean Water State Revolve and Foam Loan Fund? Because these are kind of very small mobile home park-style water treatments that Water treatments that. Will deserve to get that funding.
On the, on on any sort of remedial or. It's probably not quite the right word, but with regard to drinking water systems, there's the drinking water uh revolving loan fund also, which is a sister. Fund to our fund. That would probably be the major source um. For media efforts on drinking water systems like that. That said. Me and I were talking a little bit earlier this morning, um you know, we are. We are going to seek that that uh grant funding from EPA and I think. I was sending the the interest in habs, which is a serious issue also. I think we are going to want to. Be seeking that resource also for work on on PFAS. It's not a ton of money, but it's. Uh I think we're we're gonna need it along with all the other states, just given where EPA seems to be going in terms of these levels.
And I bet if you cross talk to the environmental justice and the resource aspect of some of these smaller mobile home sized.
Yeah.
You're gonna find that Venn diagram overlapped. These are the communities that we. Support.
Yeah, and we, I I just want to mention also that um. When EPA came out with their roadmap. Internally, um we, I decided we needed to figure out what what's this gonna look like for Oregon? Because again, you know, the the PFAS issue, if you will, it's. Looks a little different in different states. Some states are gonna have a primarily a drinking water issue. Some states may have primarily um. A surface water issue. Some states may not have a water issue, but they're a state where a lot of um. PFAS contaminated soil from cleanups needs to be disposed of. So it's gonna, it's gonna look different. And so. Um you know, talking to our media administrators and our laboratory administrator and staff. You know, we said we need to figure out what um essentially what a work plan or roadmap looks like for Oregon. Um in response to EPA's efforts and. In alignment or in conjunction or in parallel with EPA's roadmap. So. That's what staff are doing right now. They they're looking at that roadmap and saying, you know. If this were to occur at the federal level, then what would Oregon need to look at for our? Um rules and statutes and policies in all of the media, in air, land and water. And that includes our laboratory. The laboratory does have some um surface water testing capacity and has been. Um looking at source waters, you know, small drinking water systems. That's the update that's in your um director's report. And now the conversation for um, I think all laboratories and and states will be and and if the levels come down drastically. In the fall, then what does our methodology need to look like?
Yeah, the only other thing I would, and I'm sure your teams are talking about this as well, that what OHS, OHA with their public water survey that they did. A lot of this will be groundwater based and. Firefighting films and historical aspects around that. So where you do find a smaller kind of rural community that's gonna be probably on groundwater like these mobile home park kind of things are. This would be a great opportunity to expand um DEQ's groundwater monitoring around that for private wells. Because this isn't a typical uh contaminant that you can get measured, you know, in a certified lab, but if. Mobile home parks can basically be certified with that. I'd be a nickel. That it'll be like a sentinel to a regional issue. And so you'll have private wells. Around that if there are, you know, in those communities, it would probably pop hot to. So it'd be an opportunity to kind of do targeted. Um groundwater surveys in a way that would probably be very resource efficient. Because these are really expensive analyses too.
So this is um, this will be a a big issue nationally. Uh I think it will be a little different here in Oregon. I'm not saying it will be a big issue, but. We don't have the large military installations that you have in Washington, California. I frankly, a lot of other states and uh that said. We are gonna have our PFAS issues. Um and. So this whole issue deserves a lot more discussion and briefing and we will be breaking information back to you all later this fall as. Things unfold at the national level. We are, I mainly just wanted to flag that we are tracking all this and. Uh there's there's work going on internally and with Health Authority and I know our local water utilities also are tracking these issues really carefully. So um. Work on. Uh that's probably about all we have time for today. Uh so with that, I'm gonna probably want to just.
I can keep short.
Okay.
I I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can keep strategic planning short. You've heard a bit about it in some of the updates and. You know, at at a high level, the steering committee is really um. They're really still in the beginning stages of their work. So you're you're gonna hear a more substantive update on where strategic planning is going over. Over the coming months, but we've we've talked with you about um having the two consultants very done and engaged to change. Um we've talked about how we really are um working to center this process through. Um DEI and have a resulting strategic plan that serves Oregonians in a just and equitable way. So a lot of the, a lot of the foundational work um that the steering committee has been doing. Is is really setting up that foundation for how they work together and um, which I think will feed into the the resulting plan. Um we've had past efforts. They've been largely focused though on improving processes. I wouldn't call them strategic planning efforts at DEQ. So the committee is also learning. Uh you know, what does a strategic plan look like for DEQ versus focusing on improving processes? It's a, it's a little bit. New um for us. And so we expect that, you know, this is gonna be a high level. Visioning effort that gets followed by implementation planning really to realize that vision. I I want to say just a little bit about, you know, working toward an equitable and inclusive process. You know, what does that? Mean? And and you were raising that a bit yesterday, Chair George. And so some aspects that the committee's been talking about. Again, set this this foundation and try and approach this work in a slightly different way. Um it means being aware of who's in the room and who isn't. And um working towards representation of those who. Are not or cannot be at the table. Um in the steering committee meetings, folks have identified. Wanting to be sure that we're considering tribal nations, underserved communities, those with low income and BIPOC communities that have been overburdened with pollution. Um means that we're thinking about the environment and species that don't have a voice at all. Um it means that we're operating with transparency so that DEQ staff and the public can can follow along with the work. Um but the committee has also talked about um. You might call them some ground rules or working rules for the committee that includes keeping um. Stories in the room, keeping personal sharing in the room. And a a known saying has has really surfaced. Share the lesson, but protect the story. Um other themes that have emerged in learning and discussions are honoring the lived experiences of people and not just uh quantitative data and recorded science. Helping, you know, using using these experiences to help inform goals for DEQ that are gonna point our efforts. To the communities that we serve. We're we're um. I think good at and taught to um. Use our statutes and our rules and all of the important legislative intent. Um behind what this agency does. Those are all important things to do. Those are things we do well. We know how to, we know how to do that. Um how do we also bring in some of that um? Um experience of people and communities that is less um. Quantitative, that is, that is not so easily um put into an Excel spreadsheet. How how do we incorporate that into the work? And you know, it also means raising tensions in the room um amongst the committee and saying them out loud. And Chair George, you demonstrated this earlier. Uh today and talking about states' water work and the fact that the tribes um, you know, had not really experienced a response in. In their communication to the state. It's it's naming a tension and exploring. What does this, what does that mean? And and um, you know, what? What are we going to um encourage through this process to to rectify those tensions? So I think we're off to a decent start. Um I think the committee's building a strong foundation. Um I see them adjusting to, you know, a fairly large group of cross-program uh cross-geography. Work and and that kind of a large, you know, intersect hasn't happened in a couple of years because of the pandemic. So I I I see some adjustment there. I see some adjustment to having two consultants that that are bringing, you know, really different expertise. And we need both in in the room. So there's some adjustment there. There's times when um, you know, we're talking really about. Strategic planning and and the processes associated with that. And there's times when we're having a discussion about um. You know, um dominant white culture and what that does in an organization. These are, these are different types of conversations, right? But we're, we are trying to bring that together. So people are having to adjust and we're gonna have to keep doing that. Um because when you bring those components together, I think it's going to um. Bring a really uh thoughtful result for for the agency. So I'm confident the steering committee can get there. And we're all learning. I think that's what I would say about it for today.
So we'll continue to report to the commission as as the second goes forward. It's, you know, um. It's it's gonna take the time it needs. So I very quickly, just a few other things. I I'm somewhat tempted to just leave it there because that was nice. But I will report on a couple other things very quickly. We've heard uh in the public forum. Interest in the critical energy infrastructure hub work that we're doing. We are, we have started that rulemaking and we'll have a report for the commission on that effort. Probably either at the September or November mission meeting. Update, but that is pointed toward the June twenty twenty four, the middle of um. Uh vulnerability assessments to a Cascadia nine earthquake and what that would look like and then. Then plans to mitigate the risk that's identified, but gets submitted after that. Um then in no particular order, we've received two petitions for rulemaking. One on with respect to the Metolius River uh and one with respect to the Lammer River. The Metolius is a petition for an outstanding resource water designation. Uh we will be um coming to the commission to talk about that petition at the September meeting. Uh and then we've also received a petition with respect to the Lammer. And this one is a a request to. Regulate trash um and trash along the Lammer. It's submitted by Lammer River Keepers. And again, we'll be talking about that with the commission more in in the near future. Last three things very quickly. Uh Nina Deconci, longtime DEQ employee communications director for the agency. Um served in a lot of different roles uh and most recently, but for quite some time, been Northwest Region Administrator. Uh also announced that she is retiring uh this fall. And so. We'll have an opportunity to um celebrate Nina uh with the commission, I think, probably at the September um commission meeting, but I wanted to acknowledge that. And so. That recruitment has started again. If anybody who's listening in today knows of people who might be interested in uh.
It is out and open, yes.
Running the Northwest Region of DEQ um. Have at. The door is open. Um and then finally, uh with our lab.
And if you like that, you might want to consider practicing. If not, we'll be sure to be. Director Richard.
And if you're interested in either of those positions, we probably have some mental health counseling. Of course, uh Northwest Region does always tend to have a lot going on. Um. Our lab has recently uh issued one report and is about to issue another report. I'll just um flag for folks who may be interested, the um. Uh Oregon Lakes Assessment is um. Uh a report that um is part of the National Lakes Assessment. It's just about to be released and I just finished reviewing it. It's a great report. It's a lot of information about water quality in Oregon lakes and, you know, high level, what it shows. Oregon lakes are in better shape than. Most of the rest of the Pacific Northwest and way better shape than lakes nationally. And that's both kind of good news and kind of sad, frankly. Um I it's good reading. Uh it's worth worth a look. And then also um. Wildfire smoke trends in Oregon. Uh this report was just released recently and it shows. A kind of what we all know that wildfire smoke in Oregon has gotten much worse very fast. And again, coming back to some of the earlier conversation. Significant public health concerns about um the effects of wildfire smoke across the state. And so the work that the legislature has done uh and and funded in agencies, not just DEQ, but Health Authority and. Oregon Department of Forestry and and many others um is very important and uh. You know, a big responsibility in terms of protecting public health right now. So. There'll be a lot of attention on this issue uh in the coming years, I'm sure. I think with that, in the interest of time, and so we don't actually get physically affected from the room, I'm going to. Very many questions, uh quick questions I can try and answer them.
I I think this should be one and and I don't know why I didn't think of it earlier, but in any case. Um there was also a a couple of paragraphs on the the onsite subject financial aid program and the use of the American Rescue Plan at funds. Uh and those, of course, um go to uh an entity, what?
Craft three.
Craft three that then can distribute them. Um are are tribal governments eligible for that type of funding?
They are, and I'm trying to remember. I'm gonna have to follow up with you, Chair George, in terms of. Did issue an RFP, a a request form, essentially proposals, and we received. A fair number of proposals and I can't remember if we received anything from. Tribes or not. Um I'll have to get back to you on that.
Great, and maybe just with the right contact person.
Yes.
And I'd like to just distribute that. Yeah, because it does look like uh the. Well, that, well, they are prioritizing well-related proposals, but the the period for applications looks like it's open. So I'd like to reflect that out to people quickly if I could.
I'm seeing Ryan Hoof on the screen up there and I'm gonna um. Ask him maybe to help me remember to get you that information by the way.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other burning questions or insights for this meeting?
Uh Chair George's schedule. So our September commission meeting, I think it's scheduled for the twenty first and twenty second of September, if I remember correctly. Oregon, the Oregon Legislature is going to be meeting in our legislative base uh and yours truly has been invited to a. I think a couple of hearings that conflict. So we are exploring uh with you all, uh ability to move the commission meeting to the following week. You don't have to say now, but um either Stephanie or Gretchen Harmon will be in contact with you to. Find out your availability and uh figure out if we need to do that or not.
Great.
We've been sleeping at the twenty ninth, thirty of September.
Well, I think Stephanie provided us commissioners with a little schedule, little options here. If you could just fill that out and leave it behind. And we would have at least three of us.
That's great.
All right, thanks very much. Okay, last call. All right, uh I will entertain a motion to adjourn at at twelve forty.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All right, Zimby objective journey. Hearing none, we are adjourned at twelve forty. That's for you, Greg. There he is.